Welcome to the June 4th, 2020, meeting of the Town of Southampton Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held via video conferencing in accordance with Governor Cuomo's Order 202.1, and until further notice, all of the board's meetings will be held remotely. So we asked the public to continually check the town's website for updates and new information. There are also options on the website for public comments and the pre-registered speak on public hearings. So please consider that for all future meetings. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only, please do not join the Zoom meeting. Please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the meeting group from the drop-down on the left, and click on the live link at the top of the page. If you wish to be heard during the meeting but did not pre-read, please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the meeting group from the drop-down on the left, and you will find the information required to join the Zoom meeting. With that, I'd ask that we say... I pledge allegiance to the unified United States of America. Next, wanted to mention a couple of other things. We will be starting this meeting with public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public standing by via Zoom, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Certain will be muting his speakers until it is their time to give testimony before the board. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. Board members who must recuse themselves from any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of the hearing. Unless otherwise stated at the end of each hearing, all of these applications will remain open for written comments from the applicant and the public until July 3rd, 2020. Is that agreeable to everyone?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Those comments can be addressed to the board secretary, Candace, and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall. Additionally, in accordance with the governor's order, these hearings will be recorded and will be posted on the town's website. And I had a couple of other things I wanted to mention. We are not going to be able to share surveys tonight. So if applicants, attorneys, or agents have the capacity to share surveys, that would be helpful. And lastly, Candace will not be on Zoom for the meeting. So any emails that go to her during the meeting will be distributed after the meeting. And next, wanted to...I asked if we have a motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, shall move.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Tunnill.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Hahn.
Hi.
Ms. Daly. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Is Brian on, Mr. Sessa?
No.
No, okay, he's not on. Okay, chair votes are. All right, and with that, we will get started with the agenda.
Okay, as far as the agenda is concerned, item three is Michael Scarrola and Jacqueline Cress, 108 Springville Road in Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-261-3-10. Applicant requests a use variance for an expansion of a non-conforming use greater than the allowable 50% as set forth in Town Code 330-167B1A, specific types of variances. To it, a proposed two-story dwelling to replace an existing one-story dwelling located on a parcel with two dwellings. In addition, applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code: One, to legalize a wood deck. Attached to the main dwelling. Constructed without the benefit of a building permit, 330-11 Residential District's table of dimensional regulations, excuse me, for an accessory side yard setback of 8.9 feet, where 20 feet is required, and an accessory rear yard setback of 17 feet, where 20 feet is required. Two, to legalize a hot tub constructed without the benefit of a building permit, 330-11, for an accessory rear yard setback of 10 feet plus or minus, where 20 feet is required. And three, for a proposed two-story dwelling, 330-84D Pyramid Height, for an encroachment in amount of 2,567 cubic feet and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
All right, so I think we're gonna...I'm gonna move first to adjourn this to...whatever Kay wants me to adjourn it to.
For the next two meetings, there's 14 applications. So June 18th, there's 14, July 2nd, there's 14, July 16th, there's 12.
16th.
Adam, you good with the second meeting in July?
I am, that's what I was gonna suggest.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll adjourn that, and I believe Kay said that's the 16th of July.
Yes.
That's a motion.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Tunnill.
Hi.
Mr. Hahn.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Daly.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Chair votes are, I don't think that Mr. Sessa's on yet, or if he is, I don't see.
Okay, item eight on the agenda, which is Nicholas Kozlov, 18 Shreelawney Road in Bridgeham, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-87-4-1. That's been withdrawn.
Okay, we don't have to vote.
Right. And on the decision calendar, Thomas Osterhecky Living Trust, Application 190137, and then Thomas Osterhecky Living Trust, Application 190158. Those determinations will be submitted on June 18th.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Hey, Katie, I just have a question on...I had a note. I had a decision for the Barbary. That was on...is that when we already did?
That's correction number 11. When you get to number 11 on the agenda, you'll discuss the correction, and that'll be the amended.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, and we'll do the reopen for submission only. We'll do that when we get to it, Adam, later on, how's that?
That works for me.
Okay, back to the beginning of the agenda, that's all I got. Item one is 1630 North Highway, Southampton Corp., 1630 County Road 39, Shinnecott Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-177-4-29. Applicant requests an interpretation that the proposed convenience store is a customary accessory use to a gas station. As a result of a proposed interior expansion by way of eliminating the existing service bays and reconfiguration of the existing convenience store and a non-conforming lot, if applicable, applicant also requests relief from Town Code 330-95, schedule of off-street parking space requirements for non-residential uses, and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Yes, Mr. Wagner, I believe you're on behalf of the applicant.
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, and good evening, other members of the board. Thank you for hearing us this evening. I hope you can hear me all well and good.
I can hear you.
Very good. All right, so my name is John M. Wagner. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I'm from Sotumon, Ballin, Adler, and Hyman, Hop Dog, New York. And affidavits of posting and mailing have been submitted electronically to the board. The originals, I believe, are someplace in your building, having been submitted by FedEx. So I believe, as counsel indicated, we do have jurisdiction of the application. There are several other members of my team that are attending this meeting tonight, and we will call upon them if we have to answer any questions, including the vice president of the applicant, Adam Wolfe, who is the signatory for the application. We also have an architect, our site planner, and the actual operator of the station with us. So let me get right into it. What we are basically proposing requires...for me to explain it to you, I'll give you a little history of the site. This particular parcel was granted a service station use back on December 4, 1970, pursuant to a prior zoning board decision, 2688. So the service station, of course, in those typical, including both gasoline service and also automobile service in service bays in the building on the property. After that determination, specifically on April 5, 2001, the zoning board by Decision Number D10739 determined that a B is in fact accessory to the primary gasoline filling/repair station of the property. There was a condition in that decision that limited the size of the approved convenience store to 669 square feet, which included 585 square feet of retail sales and additional 84 square feet of attendant area. That's pursuant to the text of the decision. Now, the applicant tonight is actually merely proposing to eliminate the existing service bays, which have been there historically on the property, and to repurpose the area of these bays to increase the convenience store area in the building to 936 square feet. That would include 756 feet of sales area and 180 square feet of cashier area. It's basically an additional 267 square feet over what exists at the present time. Now, importantly, the existing building footprint, which is 2,213 square feet, is going to remain exactly the same. We're not proposing any modifications to the dimension of the building on the site. Everything we're doing is potentially internal. I think, you know, to accomplish what we're trying to do here, we require this board to basically revisit its 2001 determination and modify that limiting condition, still recognizing that an accessory convenience store use is allowing the property, but merely allowing the size of that convenience store to be increased. As I will demonstrate to you, notwithstanding the increase in the size of the convenience store that we are proposing, the convenience store will remain accessory to the gas station use on the property. So it will still be in compliance with the 2001 determination. So basics, accessory use is defined by the code today as it was in 2001 as a subordinate use, building or structure, customarily incidental to and located on the same lot occupied by the main used building or structure. In a prior decision of this board for Sun Oil Company, which was issued on November 15, 2014, and various decisions, D013111, in which I happened to be the attorney for the applicant at that time, the board granted permission for establishment of a convenience store in the Sunoco Station, which lies approximately a mile east of the current site that we're talking about tonight. And in that decision, the board laid out several factors to be considered, whether specifically whether a convenience store is to be deemed accessory to the principal use of the filling station. One of those factors is probably the primary factor, is whether the gross receipts that are estimated would be accessory to the gross receipts from the sale of gasoline. So for this site in 2001, as was specifically found in the board's prior decision, 10739 from 2001, the testimony of the applicant's attorney at that time stated that the sales of the retail store items were approximately 17% of the total gross receipts for the business. Based upon that testimony, the board determined that that did in fact meet the criteria for an accessory convenience store under the board's precedent. To see the situation today, I want to see if I can share my screen with you so you can see the current numbers. Let me just try to bring this up here. Always try new tricks, right? Okay, so let me...
Why don't you just tell us the numbers while you're doing it?
Can you see that now?
No.
No.
You don't see my screen? Oh, all right, well, sorry about that. What I will do is I will give you a copy of this after tonight's hearing, so you can see it with your own eyes. But here's how it runs down. We did two things for tonight. One is we took a look at the situation on the site as it exists today, based upon the sales for the year 2019. And what we determined was that the convenience store sales alone are $783,528. Now, how do we come up with that total? It consists of 624,990 in actual store merchandise sales, another 138,636 in tobacco product sales, $4,101 in vaping product sales, $12,459 in commissions from Lotto ticket sales, and $3,342 in ATM commissions. So that leads us to that total I mentioned, so 783,000.
What's the percentage of the business, sir?
Yeah, the percentage of...well, the gasoline sales revenue is over 400.
It's a convenience store percentage, that's all we...I want to know.
Yeah, the percentage as of 2019 was 15% of the total sales at the site, okay?
Thank you.
And so here's that, that's as of last year. What's it going to be when we do the increase? We are anticipating that in a best-case scenario, there'll be an increase of 20% in the sales in the convenience store, once we expand it as proposed, over that 2019 total. So that 20% increase would increase the total revenue to 940,234. And following that increase, the total revenue from the site, which includes, by the way, 4,450,784 in gasoline sales, would be a total of $5,391.18. That...
Percentage, sir, percentage?
Yeah, that represents 17% of the total sales of the site. So just to summarize the...
That's what you anticipate, correct, sir?
Correct, the expanded C-store would be 17.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, that is...let me go back to my narrative here. That is actually quite consistent with the 18% of sales that was deemed to be accessory in the Sun Oil Company decision I mentioned earlier. In fact, it's less than that. So we respectfully submit that based upon that percentage, we have demonstrated that the expanded C-store will remain accessory to the gasoline principal filling station use on the property. Another factor that the Sunoco decision identified was the size of the convenience store relative to the size of the primary use and the size of the store relative to the size of the parcel. Now, just give you that number quickly. In our case, our proposed C-store, 936 square feet, would be only 3.46% of the lot area, which is 27,086 square feet. That's a very small number, and I think it basically is insignificant, and also justifies the determination that this is an accessory use.
John, is that...the number that you gave us is as it relates to the lot area, right? You have the number as it relates, or is that the whole building? The whole building will be convenience store now?
No, the convenience store, as it's been identified in prior decisions, consists of the actual sales area and the cashier area.
Okay.
We have not included restrooms and storage areas and other things, because that has traditionally not been included in the square footage of the convenience store. So with, you know, with those two things, we're not, certainly not occupying the entire building, which, as I say, is over 2,000 square feet.
Okay.
And we're not, and again, we're not making any changes to the building outline itself, and in fact, we're not proposing any changes to the site itself. So that's the percentages. I think those are the two critical factors that determine that this is in fact an accessory use, and the board would be entirely justified in so determining. Now, the other thing I wanted to address with the board tonight is the issue of parking on-site. At present, 11 parking spaces are provided on the site, and it's been that way for quite some time. In fact, there was actually one more space at one time which was eliminated because of a required cross-access with the parcel to the east of us. And incidentally, the owner, operator of the parcel to the east, Mr. Minogue, is going to provide a letter indicating that he supports this application, and I will provide that to you as well. Now, under your code, which is Section 330-95, a filling station requires a minimum of five spaces. So we obviously provide that since we're providing 11 spaces on-site. There is a question that has arisen in the planning staff as to whether the requirement for a neighborhood grocery store, which requires a minimum of 12 parking spaces, is applicable to this project or this property. And I respectfully submit that this same issue came up before the planning board back in 2002. And in their site plan approval, special exception approval for this project, they specifically found that because we were talking about a convenience store that was accessory to a filling station use, that the minimum 12-space requirement that would be applicable to a principal grocery store use was not applicable to this specific site. And I would ask the board to please reaffirm that that interpretation does prevail here. It certainly is logical that the board's reasoning was that people who are coming to the convenience store are primarily the people who are filling up their cars at the pumps. So you have to have an overlap of the two uses there. If the board is not inclined to make that interpretation, which I think is entirely reasonable for them to do so, we would respectfully ask for a variance of the parking requirement. We would basically require a six-space variance, because we're providing 11 spaces, and 17 spaces would be required if you apply that 12-space minimum requirement. This site has been operating appropriately for many years. There's never been an issue with parking on the site. In fact, things are probably going to improve somewhat, because with the elimination of the service bays, we will not require parking on-site for vehicles that are going to be repaired on-site. So those spaces then become available to the convenience store use. So I think, all considered, since we're not changing anything, we're not going to have any effect on the neighborhood, we're not looking for anything substantial here, I think the criteria for grant of an area variance in the alternative pursuant to the Town Law 267B3 are met, and that the balancing test is also met, which would allow for the grant of that variance. And that's basically my presentation. Thank you for listening to me. If you have any questions, either I will address them, or some other member is more prepared.
The prior decision on this property, because I remember back that there was a prior decision on this property, obviously, for the initial convenience store. Is that decision part of your application, sir?
It is, it's attached to my application. It's the very first thing attached to the application.
Okay. Any conditions? Was there any specific conditions in that prior decision? And have you met all them? I don't know why, for some reason, I thought you guys had some kind of roll-off box up there, and you were using it for storage. I thought that perhaps we had conditioned decision or requested you to remove it.
Uh, I'm not aware of that situation. There was a...I know there was a subsequent decision rendered, but I think that had to do with signage. And, you know, I'm not aware of any current condition out there. I'm not aware of any violations issued against the property either.
I'm not suggesting there was violations, I'm just inquiring.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll take a look at the prior decision.
Sure.
See what it says.
Yeah, Keith, I can read you the end of it. So, "We granted the convenience store as a use accessory to that of a gasoline filling/repair station, and the board conditioned the interpretation upon the following: The retail sales area of this building is limited to what is illustrated on the floor plan by Catapano Engineering PC dated March 14, 2001, exclusive of storage areas, offices, and restrooms for the sale of prepackaged food, candies, coffee, soda, and related items. Additionally conditioned upon the prohibition of any signed advertising a convenience, retail, or, looks like, country store on premises." So it appears that that decision would have to be amended as part of a granting relief.
Right, and specifically, Mr. Chairman, earlier in paragraph seven, the board specified what the square footages were that the requirement applies to. And that's the numbers I gave you earlier that we're looking for relief from.
Yep, no, I understand.
I don't think that's unusual either. I mean, that's, you know, it's kind of just detailing the plans like we would for the, you know, square footage of a house or something like that.
Right, and for what it's worth, this decision in 2001 was kind of in the early days of this board dealing with the concept of convenience stores, that accessory gasoline stations, that's hauled over the years. We rendered many decisions where we do the same analysis that, John, you just meant for. So, you know, basically what you're looking for is a minor change to the, you know, the portion of the use that is going to be for the convenience store, but it's not going to actually change the physical location in any way. But it is, it's something we've done frequently in the past, these interpretations. So, and so Keith asked about the percentages. We care about the percentages, because we want to make sure that the use of the premises as a convenience store is customary to the selling of gasoline, which is supposed to be the primary use, and we do that through the receipts, and we do that through the representations that are made as to the profit from the sale of gas from gasoline station versus the profit from the convenience store, either as presently exists or estimated. In this instance, we have existing plus estimated for the expanded convenience. So it's all consistent with our prior decisions, what you're looking to do. The only thing that's a bit of a wrinkle, that's slightly different, is the, you know, that we have to amend the prior CBA decision. But that's, in this circumstance, to me, you know, perfectly normal, really, because we typically, as Katie said, indicate the size of the convenience store used that's going to be used, and you're just looking to change that number or increase it somewhat. And not a lot, really, really, a modest amount.
Mr. Chairman, significantly, the 17% that we're projecting in percentage here is exactly the same 17% that was in the prior decision.
Right.
So we're right on the number with that.
Okay, good. Now, the other thing I just wanted to mention is about the concept with the parking spaces. I cannot recall a time when we had an application for this type of relief for a convenience store and a gas station where we consider... where we consider for parking purposes it to be a grocery store. I don't recall that we've ever done that.
But do I.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't know if other members of the board see it differently, but that's historically not something we've done, for what it's worth.
Okay. I appreciate that.
I'm with you, Adam.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, the only other question I have for you, John, is whether you have had any communication with any of the neighbors?
As I said earlier, we have communicated with the fellow right next door to us. He has the greatest contiguity with us, and he has indicated his full support for the application. Now, I have a letter to that effect, which I will provide to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, you said that earlier.
Okay.
Anybody in the audience?
Yep. Are there any other questions of members of the board? Is there anyone who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with this application, which is the application of 1630 North Highway, Southampton Court, or 1630 North Highway in Southampton? Charlie, do we have anybody waiting?
It's kind of hard to tell, but I see none.
Okay. Well, we'll give it.
You've given them time, so they can unmute themselves.
Okay. Well, we'll give them a half a minute.
Good. Done.
Okay. All right. So it does not appear there's anyone from the public who would like to be heard. Therefore, Brian, it is yours.
So seeing or hearing no one, and I broke up for a minute. Yes, I'm here. Do you hear me?
I can hear you.
Sorry, I'm having a little bit of an internet backlash. But seeing or hearing no one, I move, we close the hearing. And Katie, how much time do we need?
We're keeping the public hearings open until July 3rd. With the decision 716.
Very good. That would be my motion.
Okay, Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tothill.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley. Kevin, try. Katie, I think you need to turn your, is your microphone on?
It's on now, yeah.
Okay. No problem. Okay. All right. Thank you, John. Have a good night.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Item 2 on the agenda is Charles and Teresa Westergaard, 10 the Parkway in North Sea, Suffolk County tax map, 900-95-1-23. Applicant request for relief for the following provisions of the Town Code. 1. 330-11.2F, accessory apartment specialist standards to allow an accessory apartment to be constructed in the basement of an existing dwelling located on a non-conforming lot that is less than 20,000 square feet. And 2. 330-11.2G1, to allow the total floor area, habitable living space of the accessory apartment to be 54% of the total floor area, habitable living space of the principal dwelling, where a maximum of 35% is permitted, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Good evening, Wayne.
Good evening, board members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Morrison, and Rowan for the applicants, the Westergaards. I believe my client may be also online. Hello, Theresa and Charles. We submitted an affidavit of posting and mailing to the ZBA office this morning. Hopefully you have that and acknowledged the jurisdiction. As the application noted, indicates there's two forms of relief, and I'd like to clarify that when I get to that. But the property in question is known as 10 the Parkway. It is a parcel that's shown as two lots on a map filed in 1928. It contains a lot area of 17,360 square feet. It's located on the south side of the Parkway, which is a private road on the west thoroughly side of North Sea Road. And this is about 209 feet west of North Sea Road. As I indicated, this is a lot that is 17,360 square feet. It's been held in single and separate ownership. Our clients purchased the property as a vacant lot in April of 2016, and constructed a one-story, single-family dwelling with three bedrooms. We provided you a copy of the certificate of occupancy and the record for that. Part and parcel of that, our clients always plans to do further renovations and anticipating increased number of bedrooms. They originally received permission from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services for a septic design to accommodate six bedrooms on this property. In January of this year, our clients applied to the building department, and a building permit was issued. We provided you a copy of that, it was issued on January 15. And that was to finish the basement with three bedrooms, two bathrooms. And as indicated, that was accepted, because the health department approved the request for up to six bedrooms. My clients have undertaken that work. They have not, they obtained the certificate of compliance for the electrical permits. They haven't closed out that permit, because there's one element here that if this board grants the permission that we're seeking today, which would be to allow them to include essentially a kitchen, which would be used in the apartment. That would be the only physical interior change. There would be no exterior change to the property whatsoever. That being said, our request, as noted in the notice, is from the one standard under the accessory apartment regulations, which require a minimum lot area to be 20,000 square feet in this particular area of the town, that being North Sea, which has a population density less than 500 people per square mile. And that has been acknowledged by the building department. So we qualify the minimum lot area as 20,000 versus 30,000, that being the case. The relief we're seeking is from that section that requires it to be 20. We have a parcel of 17,360. The difference is 2,640 square feet, or about 13, a little over 13% of the requirement. As to the second part that was in the notice, after talking to the building department and Candace, when they were getting ready to do the notices, they had asked for additional information on the floor area, and not knowing the original architect's plans didn't have all the calculations of the floor areas. So out of precaution, Candace added that to the notice. However, shortly thereafter, we provided the board with actual sealed architectural plans that showed floor area calculations that comply with all the floor area requirements. So the apartment is actually 28% of the total floor area. And if you were to try to make a distinction between total floor area, which is what the code requires, versus habitable living area, which is what the board has to apply in the case of an accessory apartment in an accessory building, it still would comply if you used that standard, which is 35%. So either way, we're under the 35% requirement. So we don't need relief in that second part. So in this case, the only relief is the lot area, 2,640 square feet. If you looked at all the surveys, the plans, the aerial photographs that we submitted into the record, you'll first see that this lot is about 209 feet west of North Sea Road. The property immediately to our east is actually in the HO Commercial District. So the zoning line between the commercial district and our property is our easterly property line. The properties in this subdivision map are all pretty consistently the same size. The properties to our south are substantially smaller. We have, as I indicated, there'd be no outward change to this. In fact, our client can still have six bedrooms on the property. The only difference would be is they're able to rent out the key and add a kitchen to the property. That being said, as far as we received two letters and submitted those, it might have been three letters, but more importantly, the neighbor to our north, immediately opposite the property, Barbara Gray, submitted a letter and had no objections. And the neighbor immediately to our south also provided a letter, having no objections. We also received another one from, I believe, a tenant in the area, Mr. Zimmerman, and he indicated he had no objections as well. That being said, unless the board has particular questions, we did submit copies of other cases, where you have provided similar relief. I believe this application is consistent with those applications as well. And it's only but for that lot area that exists. 18,000 square feet is the only thing that is inhibiting us from allowing them to have an accessory apartment in the space that is already approved for the bedroom use.
Okay. So Wayne, I just want to, I know you said it a couple of times. So you no longer need relief for relief to be 54% of floor area?
No.
So it's only due to the dimensions of the existing lot?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We submitted from Michael Behringer, and he gave you a pretty detailed calculation of the floor areas.
Yep.
Down to, you know, each closet, each bathroom, bars, so on, foyer areas, et cetera. So you have a pretty detailed, you can see the calculations. And on the bottom, it summarizes total floor area, it's 28%. And if you were only to do the calculation based on habitable living space, it's 35%.
Okay. And it's three bedrooms being proposed for this apartment, correct?
Not being proposed, it's a two-bedroom apartment. There's two bedrooms in the basement.
I see.
If you look carefully at the floor plans, there's a separation and different foyer, not, you know, common area. But the one bedroom is used by the family upstairs.
All right. All right. I'm glad I asked. Okay.
Yeah, but the plans do say bedroom A, bedroom B, bedroom number four.
It's confusing.
Bedroom number four, so there's three bedrooms upstairs with the main dwelling. So that will be the bedroom number four for the main dwelling. And then A and B are the accessory apartment.
I see. That's what distinguishes them, as opposed to the number.
I didn't get to hear what you said about the bedrooms.
Okay. Three bedrooms upstairs, the item number four, bedroom four, belongs to the upstairs, and then A, B, or whatever ends up in the accessory apartment.
Got it. Thank you.
Two bedrooms. You're welcome.
Exactly.
Thank you, Wayne.
Okay. Any other questions, members of the board?
I have none.
Okay. Is there anyone who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with this application? This is the application of, let me see.
Charles and Teresa Westergaard.
Yes, Charles and Teresa Westergaard, or property located at 10 the Parkway in North Sea.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, can hear you.
Hi there.
Okay. I just have to swear you in, so unless you're an attorney.
I am not an attorney.
Okay. All right. So if you can just state your name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Zachary Lazar. Address is 35 Missopaw Avenue.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. You can tell us your comments.
My comment is simply, like, something that just went a little weird there. My concern with this is just density and noise. There's been a lot of increased density in this neighborhood. I live right across the woods, sort of. And so this would essentially turn a single occupancy house into two houses, you know, two properties, which is kind of like twice as many occupants in a certain way. And in a little neighborhood like this, that's a lot. And this has been a, every year, there's more and more people living in this neighborhood for one reason or another. And it's an effect on our quality of life, because of the, not just the density, but the noise. This was a very quiet neighborhood. It's right next to Big Fresh Pond. And so I'm just worried about any deleterious effects on the quality of life, and even on the property value of my house. Those are my concerns.
Okay. And I appreciate that. So I just want to make, so you're aware, this accessory apartment law in the town of Southampton has been on the books for quite some time, for many years. And the intention of that law, there are few intentions, but the main intention of that law is to allow people who live in the town to be able to afford to continue to live in the town when, you know, when it may be difficult for them. So it is the only part of the accessory apartment law that is requiring variance relief here is the lot size, because it's a lot of 20,000 square feet. I'm sorry. A lot is less than 20,000 square feet, and the requirement is, you know, is 20,000 square feet. But what we have often done as a board is often the people that need the help from the accessory apartment law the most are people who have smaller lots. So we, you know, when we consider the, you know, concerns of adjacent property owners, we look primarily at the intent of the accessory apartment law, what it was intended for, which is to try to help people continue to live here.
How do you make a determination about the need for an apartment? You know, how do you assess the financial picture?
Yeah. Well, we can ask questions, and I'll certainly do that of Mr. Bruin right now. Okay. As to what the needs are of the owners that necessitate them wanting to have an accessory apartment.
Mr. Chairman, did Zachary say that he was a bordering neighbor to this property?
I did not ask. Are you an adjacent property owner, Zachary?
Yes, I'm kind of kitty-corner.
We share.
We share, we do share a border.
Okay. Okay.
Hello?
Okay. So Zachary, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I guess I would just like clarification about what the standard is for the financial necessity of someone having an accessory apartment.
Well, we.
This is a new construction, a new house that was just built within a couple of years.
Okay. So we ask questions, but I will also tell you that in order for the person to use an accessory apartment pursuant to the accessory apartment law, they have to live up to certain standards. So among other things, it has to be owner-occupied. Either the apartment or the primary structure has to be, or is the primary use has to be owner-occupied. And they have to sign, submit an application that has to be approved and re-approved by the building department in the town for accessory apartments. And if there are issues related to the accessory apartment's occupants, if there are problems with the use of the property as an accessory apartment, that is a code enforcement issue.
Also, just for the record, though, the financial need of the applicant isn't part of the test. It's part of the, it's part of the reason that the town board enacted the accessory apartments. But the standards that this board really needs to focus on are, you know, its impact on the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood, the substantiality of the request. You know, I mean, for this one, the only relief is the lot area, and it's only, I think, like 3,000 square feet short of that. So, I mean, while the board can inquire as to the need, the bigger question is the benefit to the applicant over the detriment to the neighborhood.
So I hope that answers your questions, Zachary.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Mr. Bruin about the financial.
Mine.
Okay. Wayne, can you, can you give us a little?
I just want to point out, and based on the tax information we have, Mr. Lazar's property is to our southwest. We share about 20, 25 feet of common property line. But if you look, his lot is shown as lot seven in that same subdivision map. He owns one lot versus our client owns two lots. So our lot is about double the size, number one. Number two is, as far as, just a reminder, we have the right to have six bedrooms here. They will be occupied. The only difference is we will be able to rent two of them out as an apartment, for all the reasons the chairman indicated. The health department has approved it as far as groundwater impacts or otherwise related to the lake. Mr. Lazar's property is closer to the lake. He's also fronts on Missapaw, which is, if you look at the tax maps, a different neighborhood than the Parkway, although it does back up on the same lot. That being said, the accessory apartment will provide needed income. Our clients are local parties, work and live in the town or nearby. And they're looking to provide housing to a local person as well. So that being said, we did in our petition go through all the five-part tests. The character impact on the character of the area and its actuality. If you call, if this was just a mere setback requirement, it would be considered a minor variance because it's substantially under 25%. So I hope this helps with all the questions that were asked, but it is in our petition. But for Mr. Lazar's benefit, there is a pretty significant application process with the building department that we have to comply with. And this is the only standard is the lot area. It's the only standard that we have not complied with. Every other standard will be complied with under the code.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone you'd like to be heard this evening?
I don't know, can you hear me? This is Nancy Sevastana.
Hi Nancy, I can hear you, we can hear you, but we can't see you.
Okay.
Are you in a room with another computer?
No, can you see me now?
We can see you.
Okay. I'm directly behind the lot.
Nancy, I have to swear you in.
Okay, sure.
Nancy, can you, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
State your name and address, please.
Nancy Sevastana, 23 Missapog Avenue, Southampton, New York, 11968.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, you can tell us your comments.
Yes, I live directly behind the property in question.
Nancy, can you turn your phone down a little bit?
Sure. Is that better?
Yes, I think so.
I'm hearing this echo, I don't know why that's, but, let me try something else. Okay, I'm also concerned about the population density in the same vein as Zach. All the, most of the lots on Missapog Avenue are very undersized and we're all kind of on top of each other. So to add more people directly behind me is somewhat of a concern to me with extra noise and extra people and also having tenants as opposed to homeowners who would more, be more inclined to take care of the property than tenants. So those are my remarks. I also would like to know the distance between the two additional parking spots that they're going to add and my fence, which is the back of my property.
Wayne, can you answer that question?
I'm looking at this survey, it appears it's probably in the vicinity of 45 feet.
45 feet, did you say?
They're extending their driveway area on the easterly side, it's shown on their survey, so. I don't have a scale on me right now, but it's not dimensioned.
Nancy, what else would you like to tell us?
I'm sorry?
What else would you like to tell us?
I'd like to know about the newly adopted requirement about the level of rent that the new tenants would have to pay. It says that they have to have a low to moderate income or middle income standards. Do you know what those are, those standards?
You know, there was a new accessory apartment law that was passed for different, other parts of, certain parts of the town. So I'm not sure whether this is applicable to the new law or the existing. Wayne, maybe you might have an answer to that one.
So that comes under 330 11.2A, the owner occupancy requirement, and it indicates that to me, I'm not sure exactly if there's any
Well, in any event, they're, just to be clear, they're not asking for any relief relating to the driveways distance to your lot. And they're not asking for any relief from the requirements of the apartment laws. And I believe that these laws are going to require primary occupancy of the home. So one of your concerns was that they're not going to have good upkeep of their house. Just so you're aware, they would have to be the primary occupant, it wouldn't be an option for them, they'd have to live there.
I see.
And only if the owner, so there's some preference that the code provides, which that the tenant has to meet certain standards. One is that the tenant is the owner or the relative owner or the service provider, where the tenant is employed by the town or employed by the town or within the town. And then lastly, one of the other possibilities is if it's reserved, if the owner decides to voluntarily reserve the apartment for lower moderate income housing, that would qualify as well. So our client, I don't know exactly at this moment, but I believe one of the other items that either the tenant is employed in the town or maybe a service provider is what they plan.
Okay, all right, appreciate everybody's comments tonight. Is there anybody else here that wants to speak on the application?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yep.
Hello, I think we can hear you, but we.
There I am.
Okay, so I just have to swear you in, so if you can state your name and address.
Frank Estelano, 29 Missapog Avenue, Southampton, 11968.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you can tell us your comments.
So we're right behind the property in question. And I guess, if I'm understanding you correctly, the lot needs to be, the lot is not large enough to accommodate accessory dwelling, is that correct? It's 3,000 square feet less than what it should be.
That's correct, so the accessory apartment law requires 20,000 square feet or more. And that's the only relief they're requesting.
Right, and I would ask you to stick to that. I do understand there's an affordable housing problem in our town or on the East End. But you do need to understand that this house was purchased, the land was purchased for a little over $360,000 six years ago. And the home was custom-built right after that. So to be now discussing a need of financial.
Oops, I think we lost the connection.
I think he's frozen.
He's frozen.
I was watching Frozen today.
That's about your speed these days, Keith, huh?
Yeah.
The challenges with the systems, fairly good.
Excuse me, may I speak?
Sure, I just have to swear you in, if you can state your name and address.
Teresa Westergaard, 10 The Parkway, Southampton.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
So help me God.
Okay, you can tell us your comments.
Thank you, I just like to respond to a couple of the objections. I, first of all, we purchased the property in 2016 for $265,000 and that was the maximum that we could afford. We built a very modest house with the intention of putting, finishing off the basement because we have five children between us. We are a mixed, a blended family. And ironically, the day we moved into the house, all of our children, for some reason, needed a place to live and moved in with us. And they're not all living with us now. The initial reason for putting in the bedrooms in the basement and the apartment was to help accommodate my children when they need a place to live or a place to stay. Because the primary area where we, where we live, my husband and I, not very large. It's only about 1,400 square feet and there's not a whole lot of privacy here. So that was my initial, that was our initial reason. But my daughter has a family, she's got two children, and she has had housing problems. And primarily, I, we had built this so that she could live there with her children. Whether or not I collect rent from her, I don't know. Yes, of course, I could use the money. And if I were to rent it, I would rent it to, you know, somebody local at a very, very reasonable rate. In fact, my son, who still lives with me, I do have one child living with me still. He works in town at Topier and he can't afford to live anywhere, so he wants to rent it. He has already asked me if he could rent it. So he may be the one I rented to. Whether we get approved on this or not, our five children are going to be in and out of here. And my son will be living with me, whether it's upstairs here with me now or in the basement. I, we are very quiet people. So I, you know, I hope I didn't disturb anybody. And I have gone and knocked on every neighbor's door. I'm sorry, I don't know if I have a time limit, but signatures from several of them and found that a majority of my adjacent neighbors are not owner occupied. And I can guarantee you that this house, 10 The Parkway, will be owner occupied forever because we're not going anywhere. So, you know, initially, the space was made to accommodate our children who on and off need places to live. Wanted the kitchen down there primarily so that I don't have to share mine. But if the opportunity presented itself and my children didn't need it, yes, I would consider renting to a local person at a reasonable rate that would provide affordable housing in this town. Too much luxury housing, way too many luxury condominiums, apartments, houses. And people do need a place to live here where they can afford it. And that's exactly what I would make it. I promise that I, you know, we comply with every law that we have to. But, you know, I do, I welcome any questions from any of my neighbors, but I have attempted to speak to every one of them personally. And some of them I have, thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Is there?
Yes, hello, hello, yes, my name is Joseph Deloro.
Listen, this board has historically, you know, given relief for, you know, lot size that meeting up to requirement. We've done it numerous times, numerous times. So I, you know, I have no problem with this application.
Okay, all right.
Hello?
Hold on, hold on, sure, okay. The gentleman who got cut off, who got?
I'm back, I apologize. No, I just, I just want to say that I, you know, I totally am sympathetic to affordable housing out here. I understand the problem. But I just, what I, what I don't understand is, is the need for a rental apartment so soon after this home land and then home, custom home built home was built. It just doesn't seem to, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me. And so I'm, what I'm concerned about is I'm questioning how genuine the application is. And I do not, I, for one, you know, I mean, I, I just find it hard to understand how all our new homes could have been and now we need to raise money because the East End's expensive. So I question the integrity of the application. That's all. I just, you know, it's a small community, as Zach said. The houses are on top of one another, the lots are oversized.
Okay. You just missed the entire explanation kind of response to that question. And it more than satisfies me that this is a reasonable application and a reasonable request. So it's very natural for neighbors to think the worst. But your neighbor there just gave the response to that exact question and concern. And I'm completely satisfied with her intent and the spirit around doing this.
And I also mentioned as well, this request is for lot area from 20,000 square feet to 17,360 square feet. Not 20,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet or 8,000 square feet. So this is nice, a tiny lot. This is a lot that's close to what's only, what would be allowed for pursuant to the accessory apartment law. And as Keith mentioned, we have on numerous occasions, because of what I mentioned earlier, considered this type of, you're frequently in directed, on so, on many occasions, so.
Thank you.
Is there someone else who is waiting to be heard?
Yeah, hello?
Yep.
Hi.
I can hear you, can't see you.
Can you see me?
Yeah, I can hear you, I can't see you.
Okay, my name is Joseph Deloro, I'm the owner.
Joseph, can you turn on your camera?
I.
So we can see you.
How about that?
There we go, now I can see you.
Okay, terrific.
So I have to swear you in, so if you can state your, say your name, if you state your address.
Yes, okay, my name is Joseph Deloro, 1359 North Sea Road. And the immediate eastern adjacent property to 10 The Parkway.
Okay, and you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you can tell us your comments.
Sure, okay. I have no moral obligation, moral objection to an apartment. I understand the principle behind here. My concern is, my property meets 10 The Parkway on my western border, their eastern border. And at present, there are four or more cars parked immediately next to my property, which is my backyard with my swimming pool and such. The requirement of this application for apartment specifies the need for two more parking spaces, making a total of six parking spaces, which I anticipate are going to be right against my wire fence, my backyard. I feel this is intrusive, really. I don't understand why can't, if we're going to do this, why can't the parking go on the other side of the house, or part of it anyway? To have six cars on this side of the house in what is considered a residential property. I understand I'm in the business district, but behind me is residential. To have a parking driveway with six cars seems excessive.
Would it help you at all if we required, not that we voted on this yet, but if we required them to put a row of trees in or some type of evergreen screening between your driveway and your property?
There is, they did put some sort of a berm. I don't want to be talking, I'm not talking against my neighbors, I'm just talking to the circumstance. But yeah, I mean, I, I want to be able to use and enjoy my property and not have my property negatively impacted by six cars coming and going next to it. That's a very narrow road on the Parkway right there. It's not a high-traffic area, but you understand what I'm saying. If there are six cars parked in a driveway, there's not a lot of room between the eastern end of the house and the recent property line as it is. Right, so to extend the driveway two more deep just seems like it's making, you know, a lot of switching and moving to get everybody's car in and out. It just seems like a problematic circumstance. It just seems like a problematic circumstance.
Okay, Wayne, do you want, would you like to comment about the parking?
Well, number one, appreciate everybody coming out. Mr. Deloro's property, as I mentioned earlier, is located in the commercial zone, even though he has a dwelling, pre-existing dwelling. It is a rather large house, his house is probably sixty feet from our property line. He has a pool that is probably forty feet from that property line. And, you know, if his property were developed under the zoning commercially, it would be his obligation to provide a fifty-foot transitional yard that's to be landscaped and provide the screening from the residential use next to it. Nonetheless, our client's property, you know, the code doesn't allow parking in the front yard. So we took the existing driveway and the client's spending that, which happens to be on the east side, there's really, doesn't make sense to put a driveway in the twenty-foot side yard on the west side and try to put anything anywhere there else. Nor would it make sense to further pave or gravel more portions of the property unnecessarily. That being said, we believe there are trees and we are fencing along the prop line, but we can take a look at that if that's a consideration for the board.
Well, with Cornelius's suggestion of including screening in any decision, I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah. My response to that is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I'm sorry, do you have more comments, or we're going to ask if there's anyone else that wants to be heard?
I just have one more, one response to that, really. First of all, I'm not opposed to some sort of screening there. I wouldn't want something that's going to take ten years to fill in for screening. I I would, that's not something. And also, in response to the, also in response to the attorney's comment about me being in the commercial district, as a, as a negative, I I imagine if he keeps pointing that out, he's also not opposed if I somehow sold my, my property, had a jiffy loop with it. Is that correct? And that's not my intention, but I'm just saying, you're talking about my property as if it's, well, you're in a commercial district, so deal with what happens. And I'm just saying, my neighbors are very appreciative of the fact that I create a buffer for them between North Sea Road and to have the properties around there as well. So I work in compliance with my neighbors to kind of keep things peaceful. All all I'm asking for is a, now a good amount of consideration.
Okay, all right. And I think we've heard a fair amount of testimony from.
If I may, I just want to interrupt on this. If you look closely on the survey, you'll see there's already noted a proposed tree or shrub line. And our clients are willing to provide screening along that area where the extended parking is taking place.
Okay, all right.
Whether it be a privet hedge or some evergreens or whatever, or even a stoppage.
Okay, thank you. All right, want to ask if there's anyone else who's waiting to be heard with this application, the application of West regard for ten the Parkway in North Sea. If not, Cornelius, it's yours.
Okay.
Can I just ask one question? Is earlier, you talked about adjourning cases or keeping it written open. And I noticed, I heard, I believe you said July third. I believe your next meeting in July is September.
Yeah, we're putting our decisions on for July sixteenth, and we're keeping it open for July third. Okay, that's a good idea.
I appreciate it.
Sure. I move to keep the hearing open until July third and have a decision for you on July sixteenth.
All right, it's open for submissions.
Open for submissions, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do, I'm sorry, did we have a second?
Yes, Brian.
Okay, fine, okay. All right, Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mrs. Sessa.
Hi.
Mr. Han.
Hi.
Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Toddhill.
Hi.
Chair of time, thank you all for participating tonight. Great, we appreciate it.
Item four on the agenda is MOP Dreams LLC, nine Hobart Lane in Quogue, filed. Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred three eighty-three dash two dash thirteen. Requested relief from town code three thirty dash eleven residential district stable with dimensional regulations for a principal minimum side yard setback of seventeen point two feet, where twenty feet is required, and a principal total side yard setback of forty-three point four feet, where sixty feet is required per proposed one-story addition to an existing dwelling and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Thank you.
All right. Bruce Sessa, swear you in, if you can state your name and address.
Bruce Anderson, Suffolk Environmental Consulting, offices in Main Street, Bridgehampton.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, you can tell us about the application.
Yes, this is, we are asking for various build to square off a tiny portion of the northeastern corner of the existing house. Specifically, it's released from three thirty dash eleven for an individual side yard setback of that northeasterly corner by fifteen thousand, fifteen square feet, of which seven point five square feet would be in violation of the actual setback.
Hey Bruce, is Matt Ivins trying to share his screen with us?
Yes, Matt has a copy of the, of the survey, if helpful. So you can swipe through the survey.
Share a screen.
You can.
Yeah, you can, do I go there? So you can swipe over to that survey, and you'll see on the corner of the house, you'll see this one-story addition. It says two dash twenty-seven dash twenty, and it points to the squaring off of that dwelling. Can everyone see it?
No. He's not sharing his screen.
He's just holding it up.
It's not really, it's not really let, viewable like, like that.
All right.
But we have.
Yep, keep going.
Okay.
Yeah.
So worried about fifteen square feet.
Yes, of which seven point five square feet or half of it violates the twenty-foot setback. And so that's a two-point-three-foot encroachment of the side yard. And we're requesting very minor relief of the two-point-three feet, which is eleven point five percent of the, of the requirement. We're also requesting relief again from three thirty dash eleven for total side yard setback, which would total forty-three point five feet, where sixty feet is required. The variance request of sixteen point five feet over the total side yard setback constitutes relief of twenty-seven point five percent of the standard. Existing properties improve with a two-story, single-family dwelling with patio, pool, and tennis court. The dwelling is undergoing renovation and expansion pursuant to a building permit and a previous minor variance granted by this board. A review of the survey filed with this application prepared by Randall Marks in Carrington on April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty will indicate northeastern corner of the house would be squared off for that fifteen square feet. The northeastern corner of the dwelling contains one story and has a measured height of thirteen point five feet. The architects for the applicant, Mojo Stumer, provided the town with a pyramid drawing, and the building inspector has certified that, has certified that the addition does not violate the town's pyramid law. The property received previous minor variance relief on the opposite side of the property for a proposed garage extension. We submitted a prior, what we call prior ZBET termination map, which lists sixteen decisions of area variances in the neighborhood. The variances requested in this application are much smaller in magnitude than most previously granted in this neighborhood. We maintain that the variance criterion is satisfied in this application in that it will not cause an undesirable change in the neighborhood because the fifteen square feet squaring off of the northeastern corner of the house is imperceptible. As stated, the actual area of relief is approximately seven and a half square feet within the setback proposed at seventeen point two feet from the side lot line, where twenty feet is required. Relief is minor. Further, variance requested with respect to total side yard results in an imperceptible visual impact to the neighborhood and adjoining property owners. We submit the benefit cannot be feasible, cannot feasibly be achieved without the variance because it is the property's owner's goal to square off a reasonably sized bedroom, which would measure twelve foot, eight and a half inches by thirteen foot, one and three quarters inches. The variance is not substantial in relationship to the existing setbacks, and the individual side yard setback requested is again considered minor. We also submit the granting of the variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood because the variances are small and minor. The squaring off of the northeasterly portion of the building in the one story is completely screened from the neighboring dwelling to the east. Also, no permit approvals are required from any environmental agencies, including the NYSDEC and the Southampton Town Conservation Board, as letters of non-jurisdictions have been issued by both wetland authorities. So in sum, the benefit to the applicant is the allowance for a reasonably sized and dimensioned bedroom. And we submit there is no detriment to the neighborhood or community. And that concludes my basic case. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, well, my only comment is it's a, in my view, a modest application.
Absolutely.
I agree. I have no problem with it.
Okay, is anybody here?
Yeah, any other questions from members of the board? Is there? Who is waiting to be heard in connection with the application of MOP Dreams LLC? This is for nine, probably located at nine Hobart Lane in the Quoag.
Feel free to unmute yourself.
Okay, if not, Helen, it is yours.
Okay, closing the public hearing. We'll have a decision on July sixteenth.
Okay, well, we're leaving it open for written substance until July third, correct?
Yeah, if necessary. Doesn't seem like it's going to be necessary, but we can always do that.
Okay, well, we're doing that for all the applications.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion?
Sure.
Okay, Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Han.
Hi.
Toddhill.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Daly.
Hi.
Mrs. Sessa.
Hi.
Chair of time, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you very much, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Bruce.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, item five on the agenda is Michael Bruno for Wicketuck Drive in Neuyach, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash fifteen dash two dash fifteen. Requested relief from town code three thirty dash eighty-four D. Pyramid height for a proposed encroachment in the amount of one thousand one hundred and sixty-six cubic feet for a proposed partial second-story addition to an existing dwelling and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Good evening, Kevin, I'd like to swear you in. You say your name and address.
My pleasure. Kevin, swearing on Channing Cross, Hampton Bays, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you can tell us about the application.
Okay, if you take a look at the survey, the main reason for this is because our, our main dwelling is only nine, nine four inches off the southern property line, which is causing our encroachment of about eleven hundred square feet, which is not a lot. As a matter of fact, the actual addition is only about three hundred and ninety square feet in total. But we do not have a whole lot of options because it's a pre-existing dwelling, of course. It's, the addition consists basically of just two bedrooms for the growing family. I have spoken to the neighbor to the south, who would be great, the one who would be the most affected by it. He's actually in, going into contract and purchasing that house. And he was, had no objection. As a matter of fact, he asked us if he needs to do the same, since he's only seven feet, seven inches off of his property line, that we would do the same for him. As you can see in, in the, in the Wicketuck Drive area, that there's many, many houses that are very close. There seem to be a lot of narrow lots. Most of them, you know, there's quite a few variances. But that's really it, that is, there's not a whole lot to this application tonight.
What's the square footage of the houses that presently exist in the addition?
About a thousand square feet. It's very small.
Modest house.
Very modest.
Okay.
And the reason, I will just mention, is that the, the purpose of not going out towards the actual Wicketuck Drive area, where we have the most room, is that in the future, there's thought of either maybe a pool or a garage where we would have to come back to you. But right now, they're just looking to add on some bedrooms for the kids.
Sounds like a good application, and I have no questions.
Okay, any other questions from members of the board? Is there anyone who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of Bruno? This is for, for Wicketuck Road in Neuyach. Mike, it's yours.
Okay, we'll keep it open for written amendments until July third and have a decision for you to, July sixteenth.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time. Second.
We have a second. We have a second.
Second by Mrs. Sessa.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Sessa.
Hi.
Mr. Han.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Toddhill.
Hi.
Chair of time, thank you, thank you, Kevin. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you, you too. Item six on the agenda is William Keiki, seventy-four Water's Edge Road, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash sixty-two dash one dash forty-eight.
Is there anyone here for the applicant?
I see Eileen a box, but I don't know if she's on right now. If not, we'll second call.
I'll take it.
I believe she is here.
She is there.
Okay. Well, she may be here, but we can't communicate during, so we can't start the public hearing.
All right, we'll second call it, I'll move on. All right, item seven on the, on the agenda is Antoinette Melvic, one oh four Old Country Road, East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash three forty, dash one, dash four.
Do we have?
Hi, Heather Wright for the applicant. I don't know if you can see me, though.
Yeah, can't see you.
Oh, there we go, sorry. Heather Wright for the applicant, Thirteenth Main Street, Southampton, New York. I'm also on with our architect, Jeff Sands. So this application was on December nineteenth. As you know, the property was, is one oh four Old Country Road in East Quogue in our twenty zoning district. The applicant is requesting relief from town code three thirty dash eleven point two accessory apartment special standards for a principal front yard setback of twenty-two point four feet, where twenty-eight feet is permitted for an accessory apartment that will be located within a proposed attached garage. I watched the, the video from December nineteenth, and it, it appeared that while perhaps the board did not have an issue with the proposed relief from three thirty dash eleven point two F, there was a question about the three thirty dash five definitions, specifically accessory, the definition of accessory, and the size of the proposed structure. the size of the proposed structure vis a vis the main dwelling. And I think the board had two points. One, they wanted clarification on the actual numbers, the size of the main dwelling and the size of the accessory. And so we submitted, I'm hoping that you, you have it, a floor plan that shows the total area of the main dwelling and the total area of the accessory. And Jeff can kind of walk you through the numbers if you have specific questions about that. And then I, I saw that one board member, Ms. Burgess, asked whether we could make the structure smaller. I don't believe the board had an issue with the size of the accessory apartment on the second floor, as that was 506 square feet, so a very small one-bedroom, one-bathroom. The issue was, the issue was whether we could make the garage part smaller. We did look at this. We spoke with, I spoke with my client and the applicant, and, you know, we really can't, we can't make it that, we can't make it smaller because, you know, the garage itself is, you know, is the average size for a two-car garage. It's got nine, nine-foot bays. It's, I believe, only, Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, the depth is 25, 25 feet. You know, so it, it really fits two cars comfortably. And the alternative that we looked at, which was, you know, separating them and having one apartment and then one garage, doesn't make a lot of sense for this property. So we wanted to come back to the board, show you the exact numbers, let you see the footprint. I mean, what we're dealing with here is a very small main house. The main house's footprint is 17, 20 square feet. So it's small, very small. And so this was the most practical way for us to achieve the accessory apartment and have a two-car garage.
Well, I don't have the written stuff in front of me. What are, what are the sizes of the house and the apartment?
Sure. The footprint of the house is...
Not the footprint, the size.
Seventeen, well, 17, 20 square feet. But when you say size, are you talking about the...
How big is the house?
17, 20 square feet.
It's a one-story house?
It's a one, it's a two-story house.
So is it double that? How big is the house?
The 13, first floor is 1,300 square feet and the second floor is 420 square feet.
Oh, okay. So it's not the footprint.
About 17, 20 square feet.
Total, got it.
Okay. And the apartment, the accessory, the total accessory is 1668 square feet, and the apartment, second floor apartment is 506 square feet, and the gra, hold on, I want to make sure I said that correctly. And the garage is 651 square feet. That's not counting the, the entry hall to go up to the second floor and the 70-square-foot storage room for the mechanicals.
So it sounds like it's a small percentage size of the accessory apartment versus the rest of the dwelling?
Correct. I mean, if you compare the accessory apartment to the dwelling, and it's, yes, it's very small. And if you were to separate out the garage and compare that to the main dwelling, it also would, small, but together, the size is, is comparable to the size of the main, the main dwelling.
As an accessory structure, it's almost 100%.
It is. It's 97%. But I think you have to look at the definition. I mean, I think you have to look at what the use is, and, you know, the, the use is truly accessory. The upstairs is, is the accessory apartment, one bedroom, one bath, and the downstairs is an accessory garage. And I've done a number of these applications, 18 Cooper or 54 Tuttle, and on each application, the board really took the time to look at the use of the proposed accessory structure. And here, you know, because the concern is obviously you don't want two principal uses on the main dwelling. Here, we're going to have two accessory uses just in one building that is close to the size of the main dwelling.
Well, I know Helen had mentioned in the last public hearing her concern about this, you know, that percentage. I'm concerned about that percentage, too. And I know you indicate that, you know, you can't reduce what's the size of what's being proposed, or at least the applicant is not willing. So the question is whether this board wants to grant the relief with the, with that percentage, which basically is even though the accessory apartment is only part of the accessory building, the accessory building will be almost the same size as the primary structure.
Yes, but Mr. Chairman, when, I think you have to look at, I, I take a little bit of issue with it because I think you have to look at the, how the structure itself is going to be used. And if we were to make it smaller by what, shaving off two feet, five feet, I don't think that changes, I don't think that that gets us anywhere if we're looking at the definition of what incidental and subordinate means.
Why does it have to be a two-car garage?
Well, because there are more than one car. I mean, there's two people at the house that have more than one car, and the idea is to be able to store them properly.
I know, but you get...
Well, I wouldn't, why, why would you, I don't understand why you would want to restrict it to a one-car garage when a one-car garage is accessory and a two-car garage is accessory.
So if I, if I can just weigh in on this, and I have a question for Katie, it's my understanding that the building department, irrespective of percentage size of a garage, of a two-car garage to a principal dwelling, they will not factor in that 25% rule.
Yeah, I actually just looked that up because I knew you were going to say...
My understanding, so, so that I, while I...
A typical two-car garage is 22 by 24 is what I have written down. So that's typical.
While I, I agree with the chairman and I agree with Helen that the percentage, if we were to have to grant relief on the percentage is high, and I don't want to set that precedent, the two-car garage in and of itself, regardless of the percentage, is permitted by the building department without even having to go.
Not the size.
Because it's, what, a foot bigger?
It's 651 square feet is what I wrote down.
Jeff, can you speak to the, the size of the, the actual size of the garage vis a vis the, the entryway and the mechanical room?
The garage was 620...
Yeah. I, before, before you do that, I don't know if I previously swore you in.
No, you didn't.
I didn't. Okay, so do you need to state your name and address?
Jeffrey Sands, 6 Evergreen Lane, East Quogue, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you can tell us your comments.
Okay, um, well, the, the garage is 20, 25 by 24, very close to a standard-sized garage. Mechanical room is really going to service the upstairs apartment. The entry hall is part of the apartment as well. You know, that's the only access to the apartment with a coat closet at the entry. And, you know, the storage is, is just a little storage room off the back of the garage. I don't know what more you're looking for on, on that.
Well, if, we could have the, the percentage, you know, want to make sure that we have the correct percentages.
Well, the garage is approximately 37% the size of the house, and the apartment is about 35% the size of the house.
Okay. So combined, between that 35 and 37, that's where you, where we come up with the total?
Right, when you put them together, plus the mechanical space, then you, you're up to that 1668 and the 97%.
And we, we have had other applicants, where we have told them, if you want to have all these uses, have two structures, not accessory buildings, not one. We have done that.
There is no space. We're taking down a two-car garage to put this two-car garage up. There's, there's really...
How big is the existing two-car garage?
Existing is 522.
So there's an existing 522-square-foot footprint garage there now?
Correct.
And it has the mechanicals in it and everything else?
There's no mechanicals in it right now. It's just a bare bones two-car garage that is in need to come down.
Mechanicals are, are added in this application in order to service the apartment.
So the increase in the footprint is about 100 square feet, roughly 120 square feet?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know how the board feels, but, you know, it seems like there's some hesitation as to the size. I personally don't have, I, I'm okay with that, but you may want to consider building this in the same footprint that exists. I don't know how other members of the board feel. That may be helpful for your application.
But I hear what you're saying, Brian, but, you know, the entryway to, to get up to the apartment is 102 square feet. So if we, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, if we shrink this, if we shrink the size by 120 approximately square feet, we're, we're losing that space in, in the actual usable garage.
Right. You don't have any room to, we've tried that. You can't, you can't get up to the apartment. There's, as, as 522 square feet, that isn't enough depth for, I forget how deep the existing garage is, but, you know, the garage doors, it, it's not deep enough for a full-size pickup truck, which the client has, you know, and frankly, it's just not big enough the, the way it was built. So the garage does need to be bigger just to serve a regular large vehicle.
And the apartment on, the, the reason for this request, and I think it was mentioned last time, is that the apartment on top is going to serve, you know, is going to serve as living space for the applicant's daughter and, and grandkids. So, you know, we're trying to come up with a plan that would allow us to, you know, achieve that goal and still have the two-car garage, which we're essentially replacing.
Okay, so I'm just not sure exactly where we're headed with this one. Any other questions of members of the board?
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it, but I'm only one, so, I mean, I think you guys either need to...
I'm not okay with it.
You need to get to four or come back.
I'm with you on that.
The fact that the major neighbor is the Long Island Railroad, I think, is mitigating for me.
And adjacent parcel is owned by my client as well.
Oh, it is.
Say that again.
The adjacent parcel is, is owned by my client, and then the, to the north is the Long Island Railroad.
Well, I'm, I'm just more concerned about the precedent that we're setting for future cases.
We don't, we don't set precedent. Each case has its own merits.
Yeah, well...
I think that's right.
From the next person, we'll hear this case, too.
But, but I think this particular applica, this particular code section of, of the code require, it requires each application to be looked on its own facts. And the ones that I've presented to this board before, the board has looked at what the spec, what the use of the structure was going to be for, you know, is it going to store, does the person have a lot of off-road motor vehicles? Is there, you have to look at each, you have to look at its own facts.
Yeah.
Especially because the code does not dictate a specific percentage or size when it defines accessory.
I'm, I'm with Mr. DeSessa. I don't have a problem with it.
That makes three of us.
Anybody else?
I think I'm fine with it because of the use. I would be...
Make sure the kids don't play on the tracks, all right?
Okay. So wanted to ask if there's anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with this application, the application of Novick for 104 Old Country Road in East Quogue.
I see none.
Okay, and Cornelius, it's yours.
All right, we'll keep this open for written submissions until July 3 with a written decision on July 16.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
DeSessa.
Hi.
Ms. Han.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Todd Hill.
Hi.
Mr. Daly. Mr. Daly. Jeffrey Tsai. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, everyone. Be safe.
No problem. You will. Have a good rest.
Hi. Thank you.
Can, I'd like to see if we can second call, kind to you, whoever we're waiting for there around, because otherwise they're going to be here a long time.
She is clear.
Yes.
Might be a good idea to see if we can get in before River Rock.
Yep, yep.
This is Eileen Rowan here. Are you calling me?
Yep, we, we are. We are.
Okay, this is, hold on, hold on, hold on, honey. Okay, the second call, William Keiki, 74 Waters Edge Road, North Sea, self-accommodating tax map 900-62-1-48. Go ahead.
I apologize for that holdup. I had a technical issue. Thank you so much.
No worries. I think I have to swear you in. You can state your name and address.
Eileen Rowan from Rowan Permanent Expediting Services located in Cora, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you can tell us about the application.
All right, thank you very much. I'm here before the board requesting a variance for a proposed pool located in a front yard and for setback variance for the pool to the front property line of 31 feet where 70 feet is required as property is zoned 40. Also look for variance for a concrete patio that is existing and located in a required side yard. This is a through lot having two front entry, excuse me, two front yards with no rear yard. The property owner has no other option if they are to enjoy in a front yard. Whether this is the secondary front yard or the property is not a true record. Both the pool is 31 feet from the property line on the north side and 44 feet from the property on the south side. Location can be shifted up from the property line. If shifted to the west, maintaining the side yard setback would be on top of the garage. If moved down a westerly and northerly direction, the left of the garage, a side yard setback variance would be required. To be performing to the 70-foot setback, the pool would be actually located in the house.
Can everybody hear her clearly?
It's breaking up a little bit, but I can understand it.
Okay.
Can I do something to make, you hear me?
I think that's better.
Okay, maybe I'll just have to be closer. Okay, the property owners will be installing a five or six-foot tall fence around the pool. As a fence located in a secondary front yard must be five feet from the, from the rear property line, the location of the fence will be performing. Additionally, a fence located in a secondary front yard must be reviewed by the Architectural Review Board for medical purposes. The homeowner will be required by the ARB as to what is required for the planning. I submitted to the board, I emailed to you on this yesterday, I submitted to the board, fences being considered by the property owners. Additionally, I have submitted pictures of fences located on the properties along each of the streets. I did this research because a few of the neighbors I spoke with objected to the white paint, see that thing. Their comments were that they weren't in the neighborhood. There are many fences of this material in the, in the area as indicated in the photos that I submitted. Just to point of matter, the fence is not subject to this application and does not require variance from this board. Further, I have submitted to the board without the owner's association indicating that the regulations would concern to the type of fence to be installed. A similar application for variance for a pool was reviewed by the board then approved on 21st, 2012, property located at 36 Waters Edge Road. Board approved setback on 31.2 feet, the pool located in a front yard. I submitted a copy of that decision to the board. As the board has approved a similar application for a pool with similar setback, granting this application would not be proposed in setting. The property owner, if they are to enjoy a pool, must locate conforming to the issue. Additionally, the variance is required for the existing concrete patio located in required side yard. The patio is approximately 12 feet by 90. The patio was installed by the present property owner's parents about 30 years ago. Property owners unaware of any restrictions regarding the installation of patios. Patio is flushed with the ground and is screened from the neighbors by the issue. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak to this application. The board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, you mentioned that there was some, as, something as-built on, on the property that needs, needs relief?
A concrete patio.
Okay, all right. So is that the only as-built?
Yes. The pool is, the pool is proposed, fence is proposed.
Okay, and you said it was built by the parents of the, I, I guess, the owner many years ago?
30 years ago.
30 years ago, okay. So I presume the parents aren't around to be able to tell us any details as to how that occurred?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And you've spoken to the neighbors about this now, since you said indicating that you've talked about the types of fence? So are they aware of the entire application that you've discussed with them, or?
I don't know if the board remembers, but back in the beginning of the year, I had come in for an application, was ready... I don't know if the board remembers, but back in the beginning of the year, I had come in for an application, was ready to present, and found out that the posters had been blown away or pulled down. So as I was telling that lobby, I spoke to two of the neighbors, and that's where the fencing came up. And I hope they, they should be aware of this entire application as the date were mailed, as required, and the poster did remain in place for over 10 days.
How high is that patio off the ground, or is that grade, the cement patio?
It's flush with the ground.
Is that grade, okay.
And we're dealing with a parcel that is burdened by two front yards, and that is a triangular shape and has some challenges to it. So we certainly appreciate that as part of what the applicant is struggling with.
Did you say that there are other pools in the neighborhood?
Yes, I emailed to Candace yesterday, there is a grant. There's a grant for the property located on the east side of Waters Edge, number 36. The board grants relief from the recital section. The proposed pool will have the dimensional requirements and location as shown on the survey, and then we're given 31-foot setback from their secondary front yard.
Yeah, I see that, but are there, are there any other ones? That one's, that one's kind of far away, are there any other pools?
Not that I saw. Or not that I looked into, that was the only BZA grant I came across. I had done the research with Mark back when we started all this.
No, but forget about variances, are there any other pools?
There are other pools, I do not know the setbacks.
Maybe we can do that in the written submission. Eileen, if you could, give us, provide that information into a written submission, the pools that are in the vicinity?
I'm sure, I could do that, of course, if that's what the board wants me to do. You just want me to look into whether or not there are pools that want setbacks?
So whether their pools are in the character of the neighborhood?
Correct.
This, this is Bill Kanki, can I speak?
Okay, good.
This is Bill Kanki.
Okay, I just want to let Eileen finish, Eileen, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, I do not.
Bill's the applicant, right?
Correct.
Very good, okay, Bill, I can hear you, but I don't think I can. Can you turn your camera on?
Yes.
Yes.
There we go, okay, all right, so I just, unless you're an attorney, just have to swear you in, so you can state your name and address?
Yes, Bill Kanki, 74 Waters Edge Road, Southampton.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, what would you like to tell us?
You were asking if there were any other pools in the vicinity. Yes, there are, there's about three doors down, there's a swimming pool, and on Knoll Road, on the opposite side, there is a pool. Actually, there are probably about four more houses in the cove where there are swimming pools.
All right, well, Eileen's going to let us know what, where they are, how many or what, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Anything else you'd like to tell us?
No, and the, the, the concrete patio, that was put in by my in-laws back, probably about 30 years ago, it's, it's at grade.
Okay. All right, and were you around 30 years ago when they put it up?
Yes, I was.
Okay, well, we'd like people to get permits when they put things up.
Yeah, well, that was, that was my father-in-law.
Not coming back.
He was a tough Irishman.
No idea that they didn't have a permit.
Okay, anybody else out there?
Yep, is there anyone else who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with this application? Which is the application of, sorry if I'm mispronouncing, Kanki, Kaike, or 74 Water, Waters Edge Road in North Sea?
Are the Pearson's on? I feel like there, we had received a submission on the Pearson's. I think there's somebody on, can you?
Okay, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right, so I just want to swear you in, so if you can state your names and addresses, both of you would like to speak, or whoever would like to speak, you can state your names and address, please.
I'm Janet Pearson, I live at 66 Knoll Road.
David Pearson, same residence, 66 Knoll Road.
And do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and what would you like to tell us?
Well, like we said, we live at 66 Knoll Road, we're directly across the street from the Kankis, and we have a sort of elevated view of this proposed pool and their yard. So when we got the application from the expediter, the only way we could, you know, based how we felt about it, was from the application and survey that came with it. So we just had some concerns and questions about how certain questions were answered on the application, and we thought perhaps we could go over those with you.
Feel free.
Okay.
I mean, although, you know, you know, we don't prepare the applications, usually the attorney or agent for the applicant does, but anyway, if you go ahead and ask the questions, we'll see what we can get asked.
Okay, well, question 13, which asked for specific factual terms of the variance in terms of feet, square feet, existing or proposed structures, and we just felt like we, the answer really didn't supply anything. We, we, we saw on the survey that it was a 20 by 30-foot pool. That doesn't really, there was no other information as far as where anything else will be. It's a, it's a small yard, it's a large pool that's being proposed with, not to mention, you know, the equipment, the heater, the walkway, any other patio. So we just, we just felt like we didn't get a clear picture from that question of exactly what was going to happen. And, you know, honestly, when Eileen was speaking, we couldn't hear a thing she was saying. I didn't hear, I'm sorry, but I just, we weren't able to hear anything.
It was very broken up.
Very broken up.
But we didn't, she said something about fencing, and we kind of feel that fencing should probably, if possible, if it does get approved, a good natural material, as opposed to a vinyl fence, and good landscaping, screening around the fencing. I don't know if that can be required as part of the approval. It is only 31 feet from Knoll Road, and it's extremely visible. It's quite close, two car lengths off, off the street, and it says the lot sizes are very close together, side by side also. There are a number of, on Waters Edge, I think there are a total of almost 18 and 19 lots that are through lots, that go from Waters Edge to Knoll Road. And there is a possibility, I know that it's a case-by-case approvals, that you could end up with pools almost the entire length of Knoll Road. So that's one reason we would hope there would be adequate fencing and screening if it is approved.
Yeah.
Hopefully, natural materials and good screening, as opposed to like white PVC fencing or anything like that.
Yeah, there's, if, we just go on to question 14. It said, will the grant of the variance cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or will it create a detriment to nearby properties, if not, please explain? We just felt like there really wasn't much of an explanation there, except that the rationale is there's other pools, or there's other situations with the pools. There is another pool further down Knoll Road with the same situation, but you would never know that there is anything there at resemblance. It's completely screened with like a tall natural. We've tried to give Candace photos through an email, and she had said she was going to forward that to you guys, and I don't know if you were able to receive that or not.
We did.
While you're looking, I just don't know if you've ever been in the cove, but it is a very nice, quiet, woodsy area. We've been here for 33 years. We love it here, the neighbors have always been, seem to be very sensitive to the land, the idea that it's natural and wooded, and there's not many fences in the area, but the ones that are there are actually of natural materials, and you know, the fact that there's other pools, we were hoping it's a case-by-case basis that this is being discussed. So one of the pools is a nine-by-12-foot pool. One of the other pools is a 15-by-20-foot pool, I believe. This pool is substantial, the proposed pool's substantially larger. It's only going to be 20 feet from the adjacent neighbor's driveway, and we unfortunately have an elevated view, so it's sort of, kind of this in, right directly in front of us view, and so we just, we're hoping that, you know, if there's some way to create a buffer so that the pool and everything that goes with it is just not visible, we, you know, that's what we're hoping.
You want screening?
We want, we want screening, I didn't, were you able to see if there was an email from, because there was a photo that we had to show.
There is, I have it in my hands.
Okay, oh, okay, because we had sent an email also to Candace, and she, she had all the photos in the email.
Yep.
So, okay, sorry to interrupt. The next question was, will the variance sought be substantial, if not, why not? The answer was no, we feel that yes, and that's why we sent the photos. Again, our lot is elevated, and just feels like it's going to be, take up a large part of the property, and the fact that there are other pools, I just feel like I don't understand how that will apply to this, because that was then, this is now, kind of situation. And the last.
No, 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 other pools are relevant, because it's the character of the community. Whether there are pools or not, it's an important question. If there were no pools in the area, that would be of concern, okay? Even if the pools existed 50 years ago, the other pools, still, we want to know that information, and that's why I asked for a written submission to the agency.
Okay, and then I guess the last question that we had concerns about was number 17 on the application. Will the grant of variances have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or in the affected area in the town? And again, I, we just disagree with Dave was saying about all the houses that are adjacent on, that have a Waters Edge and a Knoll Road, two front yards, basically, and we weren't, on the, going by the application, we weren't really sure what kind of screening was going to be put up, except we did speak with Ms. Rowan, and she had said something about white vinyl fencing and some boxwoods. We're actually concerned because there are four, there's four or five large oak trees that are right on the street, and we're worried that every tree is going to be cut down to accommodate the pool. And we would, you know, we, one of the trees appears that it may be on town property. And so, you know, we have, we have concerns about everything that goes with the pool. The light pollution, is there going to be lights on all night? Are they going to be facing up or down lighting?
There may be lighting in the pool. I don't think that's, I don't, I don't suspect that that's the case, but I will ask the agent for the applicant about that.
Okay.
Okay. As, as for the application itself, you mentioned that you'd like screening, but would you like us just to deny the application altogether, is that what you prefer?
I don't want to, no, we don't feel that it's one of those situations where we want to just deny someone an enjoyable time at their house and in their yards. It's just, we felt like it's possibly going to really affect values that are around it, because there isn't any other situation in the cove that appears to be like that.
Okay, well, what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask Ms. Rowan about your comments, and see what the applicant is willing to do to address your concerns. Anything else you want me to add?
Thank you, Chairman. I have a concern that I'm hearing from you, that my testimony was very broken up. Is it possible that you didn't hear most of it?
I heard, but there were pieces of it that were broken up, especially in the beginning.
Okay, can you hear me clearly now?
Mostly, not 100%.
I don't know how to fix that. When I, when I hand in the written testimony with regards to the pools, I'll give you a copy of my testimony, so that you have it. As far as the Pearson's are concerned, as I said before, the ARB will dictate what is planted by the fence.
Where's him before?
When I turned off the computer that I had.
I don't know.
I can't hear whoever's talking now, it's coming in.
That's you, I think.
Yeah, I can hear you fine, Jason. Okay, how would you like me to take care of this, since we're having?
My impression is that the neighbors would like to have screened. So the question is, what, what screening the applicant's willing to, to put on the property? And also, I want to ask, make sure that my colleagues on the board are okay with us doing that.
Okay, like I had said before, when you have a fence located in a secondary front yard, the ARB rules over plantings, they will be dictating what is planted there.
I understand you.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
She, she was saying that the ARB will dictate the plantings and the fence, which I think is, is fine, but this, you know, this board can certainly impose its own screening. I mean, you know, their jurisdiction would override the ARB as it relates to what they think is.
Okay, understood.
Yep.
Did you hear, Eileen, did you hear what, what they said? And are you in agreement that you can give them what they, they want in terms of not vinyl siding, but the kind of siding that would make them happy? Can you do that?
I had spoken with the property owners in that regard, and I submitted to the board seven properties that have white PVC.
Not just asking you yes or no, can you accommodate them?
I can, I can ask my, my client if they would like to answer that question, because I can't answer for them.
Adam, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
In regards to screening, if you screen the property, and, you know, Bill is okay with that, I think that takes care of the fence issue. If they can't see through the screening, they're not going to be able to determine what kind of fence it is, right?
Correct.
So I would, just screening, I'm not going to tell you what, what, you know, the applicant, what type of fence they should put up.
We plan on, on planting in front of the fence, but as far as type of fence, I, I don't want to commit to putting up a wooden fence. I mean, because as you ride through the cove, there is quite a bit of PVC fenced in the cove.
There's not a lot of PVC fencing in the cove.
Oh, can I just make a suggestion, which is that, you know, there could be communication between now and, I don't know, July 3rd, when it's, when the public hearing record is closed, and if it turns out that there could be an agreement between, you know, probably the neighbors, that might be helpful as to what screening would be preferable.
Well, or if there's no agreement, they can come back.
Or they can come back, yeah.
So how exactly would I manage this? I'll have to go to the ARB and ask them what I want, and then the neighbors can talk? Or can you just override, if we come up with an agreement here, then we don't have to go to the ARB?
Correct.
I'm sure you have to, I'm sure you have to go to the ARB. I don't really know, you know, I, I don't, you could override that, but I think that somewhere in between, you know, what, what the board is conditioning and, and what, and their jurisdiction, there's got to be a meeting of the minds. I would think both, both boards want to achieve screening. You know, they, they, the ARB may allow more things that the zoning board will allow, because we do have, you know, some neighbors who are, are concerned. You know, this ARB may not, would, you know, might be satisfied with one thing, that this board may not be.
Adam? I'll, I'll contact the ARB, ask them what they consider to be reasonable screening. And I'll give that list to my client, and he can have a discussion with the neighbors. Does that work?
That works.
That's good.
Adam?
Yes.
I recommend that the kindies buy a bottle of wine, go over to their neighbors, sit down on a Sunday afternoon, and figure out what the hell they want, see if they can come to conclusion.
Yep.
I like your style, Keith.
Yeah, well.
Okay.
They should be able, they should be able to come to a resolution between the two of them. I think they just got to knock on each other's door and figure it out, man.
Yep. Yep. We like neighbors to get along.
Sounds good. Yeah, but we, I'm curious if Eileen knows whether they're planning to cut down all the oak trees that are on the border of the street and the property.
Well, I think that could be part of the discussion between everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Han.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So I just want to find, make sure that there's any, anyone else who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with this application. Does not appear to be anyone else. All right. Jason, it's yours.
I guess the next question is, how, Eileen, how long would you need to go to ARB, meet with the neighbors? Is the journey?
You know, with that's what the proposed, the ARB meeting, do I have access to them? I don't know.
Can we adjourn this to July 16th? And you guys come back on the 16th? Would that give you enough time?
Is there any way that we can keep it on, keep it open until July 3rd? So that a decision would be made on the 16th, if I can submit to you everything you need, properly make a decision?
I'm fine with that. What do you think, Mr. Chairman?
I'm okay with closing the sub for written subs. And if it turns out that there are issues, we need to reopen, and we'll deal with that.
Okay.
Okay. And Pearson, can you hear me right now?
Kind of. We can hear you, but you're all garbled. We don't understand what you're saying.
All right.
So hopefully, I will mail to you my testimony, so that you can see what I've presented to the board today.
Okay.
And I'm going to close the public hearing, leave it, leaving it open for written submissions. They will be due on July 3rd. And so if everything is worked out, we can have a decision for you on July 16th.
Second.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Mrs. Tunnell.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess. Mr. Daley. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. De Sessa.
Hi.
Chair of the side. Thank you all for your testimony tonight. Greatly appreciate it. I think we're going to take a short break before we go on. River Rock?
In two weeks.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Appreciate it. All right. So we're going to take a short break?
Thank you.
Okay. I have to hit the gavel. Run break.
Okay, you can start.
Okay. Okay, we're back on. Heath, I think you're.
You're muted. You're muted.
Heath, you're muted.
It's actually refreshing, but.
Keith, Keith, you're muted.
We can't hear you.
Hold on, I'll text him.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
You can hear me now.
All right. So listen, Adam, can I make a quick suggestion?
Yes.
I believe that Mr. De Sessa has recused himself from River Rock.
He'll, he'll be, he'll be addressing that once you announce the hearing.
All right. I was only going to recommend that if that's the case, that we do 10 and 11, which would be real quick. So that Brian, no decisions tonight, so he can get that, he can put his daughter to bed.
Oh.
Is everyone okay with that?
You all right with that, Mr. Bennett?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it'll be quick.
So you want to do that, Adam?
Yes. Please.
All right. Item 10 is a reopen for submissions only. It's Maria and Michael Rothstein, 43, Diana Circlehead Mays, Suffolk County Tax Map 90345-2-1. On February 6th, 2020, the public hearing portion of the application was closed, but was left open for written submissions for the agent of the owner. On May 11th, 2020, a letter was received from Benis Rourke, Chief Building Inspector, addressing the principal front yard setback and the pyramid diagram. This application is being reopened to accept said submission.
Yep, it's actually pretty simple. You had a bunch of public hearings on this. We thought we had everything we needed. We closed it. When they submitted the plans to the building department, some, one of the building inspectors mistakenly thought they needed relief for the house. So we were going to re-advertise it. And then it, then Kevin Springer pointed out that it did not need the relief. We have the, the letter from the Chief Building Inspector, so I would recommend you reopen to accept that and then close it for a decision.
Motion to reopen.
Second.
Mrs. Tunnell.
Hi.
De Sessa.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly. I think Cornelius, I think you're.
Sorry about that. Hi.
Hi. Okay, Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Let me see. Who am I forgetting? Mr. Han?
Yourself.
Okay, Chair of the side. We are reopened.
Now you've accepted the written submission from the building department, and you can make a motion to.
Motion to close with a determination on 6/18.
And we've accepted the written submission. Okay, we have a second.
Second. Second.
Mrs. Tunnell.
Hi.
Mr. Han.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Daley.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
De Sessa.
Hi.
Chair of the side.
Okay, item 11 on the agenda is a correction. It's Salvatore Barbari, 27 Shore Road, Remsenberg Speonk, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-381-1-67. On May 7th, 2020, by decision number D020034, this board granted a rear yard setback for a proposed one-story addition to an existing dwelling. This decision is being amended to correct the scribbler's error.
Okay, I have a, I have a decision.
The scribbler's error was just to revise the survey.
Okay. All right. So I have a decision in the matter of the application Salvatore Barbari, 27 Shore Road, Remsenberg Speonk, tax number 90381167. By decision number D020034 dated May 7th, 2020, this board granted a minor rear yard setback for a proposed one-story addition to an existing dwelling on property located at 27 Shore Road, Remsenberg Speonk. This decision, however, did not reference the most recent survey. As such, this board hereby amends ZBA decision number D020034 dated May 7th, 2020, to refer to the survey prepared by Martin Donald Hands-on Survey dated November 19th, 2019, last revised December 2nd, 2019. All other provisions and conditions of decision number D020034 remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Mrs. Tunnell.
Hi.
Han.
Hi.
Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Daley.
Hi.
De Sessa.
Hi.
Chair of the side.
Good night, Brian.
Oh, you have to, you have to announce it, please.
All right. Item 90 on the agenda is River Rock Structure Capital LLC, 186 Creston Avenue in Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-115-1-8.
Brian De Sessa, I'm recusing myself on this application. Have a good evening.
You too.
Evening, Brian. Okay. Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, everyone. The applicant, John Bennett, Reed 212 Windmill Lane, Southampton, New York. Bailey Larkin, another lawyer in my office is with us. Hopefully be helping us with things that I forget. And also some of the documentation. Happens more and more frequently.
I noticed. For myself, I'm talking.
So this application was last held in, on February, I'm sorry. This application was last heard at the public hearing on February 6th, 2020. This is the third meeting before the board. And at that time, the board held the meeting open for all purposes. We submitted additional correspondence outlining the relief sought by the applicant today. I did receive quite a thick submission from Timmy Latham today. I don't know whether or not Mr. The Applicant to the North. Kirst will have something, but I guess he will. But I'd like to hear everybody's testimonies, obviously your agenda, and you'll choose to act the way you want to. But it's going to be the third meeting, like to get on with this. I'd like to hear everybody's testimony tonight and just give it a week for everybody to put in final submissions. I don't need a last word. It's going, but in any event, I'll request that again at the end of the meeting. I just wanted to let you know that's where I was going with it. This is a pretty straightforward application in terms of what you're asked to do as a, a board members. And really what it's about is weighing things, weighing harms, weighing impacts on neighborhoods. And when you talk about harms, this is, it's very, this is probably the best case I've ever seen objectants doing a wonderful job of creating, creating, and I do mean creating harm where there simply is none. There's a difference between perceived harm. Law school professor used to tell me, you know, not every harm that's perceived by someone has a remedy. What, what's going on here is an app, and there's no, no question about it, in my mind, perceived harm by the objective. One of the objectants lives across the creek. Bob Smith, in one of the last meetings, was able to give me a yard sticker guideline for you folks. The objectant Mohawk, represented by Timmy Latham, lives, this is how far away he lives, from, if, from Town Hall to the Abeoff's Paints, across the creek. We flew a drone over his property. There's three layers of vegetation between his house and, and this property. So any harm is not legally cognizable. The objectant is going to try their darndest to make it seem that way. But it's, it, there's just no harm. I don't think there's standing, but even if you assume there's standing, you got to show harm, and there is no harm. The other objectants, remember we have two more of them primarily, is the neighbor to the north. And again, that's pure perceived harm. It's not legally cognizable harm. The, he didn't have a view shed. The view shed that he had was a partial one. He has a view to the east, but not down south over my client's property. That view shed, what, he's complaining about a, an accessory structure allegedly in his way. It was always in his way. We could have lifted it as a matter of law to pretty much where it is now. And we're going to demonstrate to you quite convincingly, we think and we hope, that because of this way the statutory language is in the state of New York, and by reason of two very recent decisions, I'm only going to talk about two decisions tonight. But by recent, by, by reason of one relatively recent decision from the Supreme Court Suffolk County, affirmed by the appellate division of second apartment, the complainer to the north, who by the way, sat there and watched the whole thing go on, never had a problem with it, put in a letter of support. I'm not going to bore you now. We put in the record why we think that letter of support disappeared. But in any event, as a result of some case law that I'm going to talk to you about, has absolutely no legally cognizable harm, because absolutely nothing in the code that protects any view shed of his. And he, so his arguments should, if you follow the law, fall on deaf ears. The neighbor to the east, Halsey property, it's interesting that that's an objective, because they have a magnificent view shed to the south. Also, those are two, it's not preserved farmland. I could see if somebody was complaining if the farmland was preserved, but that's two separate lots. Halsey family went in and so divided it, two separate lots, each of which could be further developed with a 15,000 square foot house, just the same way my client has. By the way, before I forget, in terms of 15,000 square foot house, in going over the testimony at one of the prior zoning board of appeals meetings, Mr. Fife, who I think is Mr. Dubin is stepping in, said, no one has a problem with a 15,000 square foot house in this neighborhood, recognizing what we've said in the past, which is this is an area with 15, 16, 17, 20,000 square foot houses. They're concerned about the, about the guest house. But we'll tell you why. You shouldn't be concerned about that. And any harm that they claim is just not harm. Legally cognizable harm is just perceived harm. A lot of complaining going on here, but I, what I want you to focus on is the harm, perceived harm versus actual harm. What kind of actual harm does my client have? So, and this is dollars and cents harm, not speculative harm. We, we have it in, in affidavits, and not only is it affidavits, but actual proof of payment. So the, the, the construction of the second story is about, and the roofing was about $1,188,200. That's in the record. To take that thing down, to try to retrofit it, $1,349,600. I haven't seen anybody really complain because, about those numbers, nor could they, because I made sure that when I asked my client to, to show me what those numbers were, I saw they have to pass the straight face test. They're going to be substantial enough on their own. You don't have to push the numbers. And then the carriage house, which again replaced accessory structures that were there, the carriage house gave you the, gave you the sheet for the expenditures, $2,120,576.57. That's about a $4.5 million harm, which is real. It's not speculative. It's not because someone's feelings are hurt. It's not because somebody got, somebody's got pressed into objecting to something that previously they had no problem with, and sat there and watched it get built. So that's what you have to do. You have to balance harm. You have to balance any impact to the neighborhood, not only what could happen, but what's there now. So let's talk about the relief. I'll try to get through it quickly. And I'm going to ask you, after you hear the objectants, to let everybody have a last shot at it and close this, so we can all get on with our lives. The last time we were here, the, the board and their council recognized that we had two units of development here, two, two development rights here. We had a, in effect, we had a primary residence and a carriage house. To be honest with you, what, I wasn't comfortable with that. So what, what I was, wasn't comfortable with it, because I wanted to have a belt and suspenders, close the door, so no trier of fact could look at this and say, there was any issue, has the number of development rights on the property. So with a little bit of kicking and screaming, honestly, but because I want to make this case as airtight as possible, we went out and found as, as is required by the carriage house law, a development right in the school district. We were able to purchase a development right in the Southampton School District, which I can just tell you, it's just the reality of it is more expensive than a development right where some of the pine brown credits come from, just because of the, you know, supply and demand. So we were able to purchase a development right in the Southampton School District, and we're going to transfer that right in, so we don't need any relief from the density requirements. and we're going to transfer that right in, so we don't need any relief from the density requirements or the carriage house requirements in the code. Where, you know, at first we said, well, we have two units of density. We really don't have to put, to transfer in this development right to, in order to get relief and establish a carriage, carriage house. We decided to do it. Why did, why did we decide to do it? Because I wanted to make the record perfect, airtight. We also need relief, one of the sections of the carriage house law says that you can only, only have a carriage house on, I'm sorry. We need relief because the lot's less than three acres, which is the, I guess that's the threshold for the carriage house. So we're just, we're, we're a bit under that, but, so we need relief for that. But we don't need relief for the density, because even though we have the existing density belt suspenders, we're going to give you a development right in the, in the school district. We also need relief because the carriage house law says the existing principal residence has to comply with all the dimensional regulations. As you know, we're here for a, for a little bit of height relief, which we will show you. We've already showed you is imperceptible. And, and, and a wee bit about 100 square foot of a triangular piece that we need front yard relief for. But nevertheless, that code section says, if you want a carriage house, everything's got to comply. So we need relief from that section. More ministerial than anything, doesn't really affect the quantum of relief or any, any, have any, any additional impact on the neighborhood. And then we need relief to permit the maintenance of the carriage house closer to the front yard. And here, the front yard is Mud Creek. We have three front yards here. We have the water to the west, we have the water to the east. And then where you have, in the town code section, we printed out as part of the, as part of our submissions, we have a water line that intersects the street line. You have two front, you have two front yards. So we have, we have a front yard, a front yard, a front yard. And then as the building inspector has agreed with us, to the north is the, is the, is a side yard. Which is why, again, the objectants suggesting that we have a rear yard coverage problem is nonsense, because that's a side yard. So we need, we need relief for the carriage house to be closer than, closer in the front yard than the residence. But let's look about where, let's, let's, let's find, let's think about where that section came from, that section came from, so that on a farmland lot, or on a lot where there's no water, you drive in and you see the main house, and the carriage house is behind you. Number one, the accessory structures were there in a nonconforming position, which are, which are improving a little bit already. But number two, my argument would be that not so much to worry about this, because from the road, the carriage house is behind the main house. And really what this section that we need relief from, was the require, was the idea on a farmland lot, you know, you have a state sort of lot, you drive in, you see the main house first, the carriage house is behind that. So really, that's what you have here, is just because we have three front yards, one of them being two waterfront yards. In the alternative, we want some relief for this, for the 50% as opposed to the carriage house. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about the 50%. I don't want to talk a lot about it, because really, we have this alternate relief for the carriage house, and relief from the carriage house, which we're more than happy to go forward with. But I think it's necessary for your decision to talk about the 50%, only to say that it was an alternative means for relief. I'm not asking you to, I'm not asking you to base your decision on it, but the objectants are making a big hullabaloo about the fact that this is prohibited, you can't do more than 50%, blah, 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 blah. Well, you know, I'm, I'm asking for relief under the carriage house law, so all that stuff flies out the window. But I'm concerned about it, because this board, if you read the case law, subsequent to that case on Town Line Road, that Tumi Latham was involved in many years ago, which they always tout as saying you can't do more than 50%. The Womboldt case, there was a case coming out of the Village of Southampton, I'll just be very brief about it. Case coming out of the Village of Southampton, the exact same language in the village code and the town code, they allowed someone to increase in two bytes of a zoning board of appeals case, an accessory apartment on that property by 305%. Using the case that Tumi Latham is suggesting that you should use to deny this application. Mike Walsh, colleague of mine, went into the zoning board of appeals in the Village of Southampton, said, you can't do that. Village of Southampton agreed to allow the, an accessory apartment to be increased by over 305%. Lawsuit followed, Supreme Court Suffolk County upheld the zoning board of appeals of the village. And, and the reason I keep on, the reason this is important, because the code sections in the town and the village are the same. They all come out of the Ruski Ruder 1970 master plan, same language. And court said that was fine. The appellate division second department said, you know, the Supreme Court was right. Maybe you have a 50% limitation on the, in the village code, as you have in the town code. But the state village law, and again, that law is the same as the state town law, allows you to increase more than that. And they said, this is clearly not a use variance, it's a dimensional variance. I leave that for your consideration. I know there's some controversy on this. I, when I was the town lawyer, it never made sense to me, but you know, I wasn't representing any private clients, so I bucket. That's the way it's always been. But it never made sense to me that the mere introduction of detached living quarters on a single family residence, you know, is, is a nonconforming use. But I, I tell you, I'm not, I'm not relying on that, I'm relying on a carriage house law. But I think it's important that you discuss it in your decision. I'll, I'll leave it alone after.
We lose John?
We lost John.
Bailey, do we have you? Everybody's.
Okay, we'll give him a minute.
Yeah, I'll let him in if he comes back.
Yeah.
Oh, good, they're going to come back in?
All right.
Probably looking for the password and the ID, because once you're in, you just throw it away. I can call them, hold on.
Okay.
All right, they're trying to get back in.
Someone just came in. Hello?
Hello? We got you.
I'm, I'm using Bailey Larkin's phone now.
Whatever works.
Yeah, I, I have no idea what's going on here. Very frustrating.
Your hair's messed up, John.
Yeah, I know.
Losing your mind, losing your hair.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta save all I can, all I have, too. All right. Where was I? Very upsetting, in any event. So anyway, let me talk to you a little bit about the objectant Moonbeams property, which is to the north. I can hold it, that's, that's fine. The problem that I have is I'm not going to have the documents. But maybe Steve Narota, who's on, may be able to, to help us out. So they don't have any frontage on, on Meacock's Bay. They have frontage on a creek, they look, they look west to the other objectant. But for some reason, they think they're entitled to an unobstructed view south of the applicant's actual bayfront property. We submitted some details back in March, prepared by Ares Design, demonstrating that if the existing accessory structures, prior, I mean, the, the prior accessory structures had been elevated to comply with the current FEMA requirements, which they could have as of right, and we sent you a letter from Mike Bennett, Mike Benicasa, on another application we had that allows you as a matter of right, which is a good policy, to lift existing structures to comply in FEMA. There essentially would have been no difference in the height than what you see now. I think is, they would have been, the structures would have had a foot and a half less. Okay? So we submitted additional color renderings by Ares Design, demonstrating this, using, using photos taken by a drone, and architectural plans for the previously existing structures. I, I don't know if Steve can show you those. Steve, are you able to show us those? Steve Narota?
Yes, I'm on here.
Yeah, are you able to show us the, what I'm trying to show is that the, there have, there's, there's no different impact from the house to the north than would be on the, than if the house was lifted as, the prior structures were lifted as a matter of right.
Yes, I'm pulling up the plans right now, just bear with me a minute here.
And Steve, I had previously sworn you in, I believe.
No, not tonight.
Well, not tonight, but previous.
Previously, yes.
Yes, okay, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure.
John, what kind of zone is it in? It's a VE, right?
Yes.
Katie was acting native.
Yeah, well, whoever, it's, it's a VE flood zone, AE?
VE.
The zone, it is now, it's in a VE zone. It's a flood zone, everything's in a flood zone, high velocity zone.
Okay, I, I, John, I have my plans pulled up. Can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Steve, what I, what I'd like you to show the board is the, how, what was there before, if it was elevated as a matter of right, would not have any different view shed effect than what is there now.
Sure, of course. So just, just stepping back, this is an image we took with, with a drone viewing from the north to south. This is the existing carriage house as it is now. What we did was we, we modeled based on plans prepared by Val Florio, the architect. We created a model, a three dimensional model, based on drawings he had done of the old garage and apartment. And we were able to plate, superimpose that. Sorry.
The height of the carriage house complies though, doesn't it? Or the cottage?
Say again?
You're asking, you're asking for relief for the height of the dwelling, right?
No, the carriage house complies.
Right.
There's no need for that. What we're just trying to show you is that, you know, there's no view shed impact. We're going to tell you why they have no right to rely on it and complain about it anyway, in a couple of minutes. But regardless, from a factual point of view, there's no, there's no impact between what we built to the cost of 2, 2.1 million dollars, and they want us to take down for some strange reason, and what was there if we had elevated it as a matter of right.
I apologize, I'm down a little. Little problem with the file, that's the old.
No, that's, that's, that's not it. Steve, doesn't the first thing that you brought up, Steve, doesn't have the, the comparison there?
This has, yeah, it has, that is the existing, we don't, we have that PDF.
What's that?
That is, so this, so this would be the, 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 so this would be existing cottage and garage, and this would be if we raised it to FEMA, meet FEMA regulation.
What's the right?
The ridge would go up to 37.6 feet, whereas the existing as-built ridge of the carriage house is at 39 feet.
So it's about a foot and a half higher. And, and the view shed interruption, so to speak, is no different. But we'll refer you, because I want to move, I want to move the matter along. Obviously be a lot easier if we're there, but we're referred, there's a package that, that, that Ares put together that'll show you that there's no, there's no, there's no really impact whatsoever to the view shed. But what, what is, what is as significant in terms of, and this is what I was talking about, legally cognizable harm. What is as significant is based upon our very extensive research of how these matters are handled. There is no, there's really nothing for the owner to the north to complain about why, because he's not entitled that view anyway. And it's not just what we're saying, it's what the courts have said, including the courts in this, in this very jurisdiction. I told, I was going to talk about two cases tonight. So I talked about one, which is the Womboldt case. And I'm also going to talk about the Scolfani versus Rogers. And it was a case, it's interesting, you learn something every day. This case that Bailey found, actually. I want to talk a little bit about it, because it's very, very important. In Scolfani, a property owner in the Village of Northport wanted to take down a one-story residence and construct a new two-story residence. And this is the real kicker. There was a conforming location within the property on which the two-story residence could have been constructed. The Village of Northport, Northport granted the request for the variances. And in making the determination, the board said, the expert testimony is primarily focused on the impact of Scolfani's privacy and view. This is really important for all the objectants, okay? However, there is no provision in the village code which guarantees a property owner's view, or for that matter, his privacy. So the neighbors didn't like this. They, they brought an Article 78 proceeding, was commenced by the neighbor, and the decision of the board was upheld by Justice Santorelli, who's a current sitting Supreme Court justice. He then appealed to the appellate division, the neighbor appealed to the appellate division. He then appealed to the appellate division, the neighbor appealed to the appellate division. The appellate division upheld below a court's determination. The zoning board of appeals is not, it's not there, you're not there to protect an abutting owner's property view, absent something in the code that says it. There are some code sections that talk about viewsheds. The Towns of Southampton Code is not one of them. The homeowner has to realize the ability of his neighbor to improve his property, and the only way to ensure panorama of visitors is for the homeowner to purchase the adjacent properties and leave them undeveloped. There's no protection in the town code, Southampton, or any relevant presence that give protection to a property owner solely based on preservation of water use. And again, if you look at that viewshed analysis prepared by Ares Design, this property was developed with multiple accessory structures located close to the northerly property line, the waterfront, and the existing structures. Can everyone hear me, because my?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. "The existing carriage house impacts the viewshed to no greater an extent than would have elevating the previously existing accessory structures, which have been done as of right, and there is no impact as a matter of law." Okay? In addition to the fact that the complaining neighbor to the north previously had no problem with this, sat there, watched it go up, gave us a letter of support, okay, has no, absolutely no damage, cognizable damage, as opposed to $2 million, $2.1 million of the money spent on this carriage house, which is built. The, the only thing that it's waiting for is a certificate of occupancy. Every, every other building department matter has been dealt with. I'm sorry, Rick Stark said we didn't submit the hers rating. I'm sorry, maybe in all the attempting to try to get this stuff done, we have one or two things more important on our minds, but we will submit the hers rating, not to, not to, not to worry. So this thing is done, built, sat there, nobody had a problem with it. As a matter of fact, it was very interesting, I was very interested to find in the Tewa Latham letter that I got today, how they had all these meetings with the building department, those meetings with the building department. They were allegedly concerned about it, but they never told, never had any direct meetings with our clients. No one ever gave, told us about anything. We had to be told by the building department. And guess what? They had all these meetings over the ones with the building department, they never took any action. It was incumbent upon them to take the action, but they didn't. That's another, that's another defense to the objectants here, who again, just no harm whatsoever. Okay, the site plan, so let me, let me go, go back again to some of the other things. The site plan approved by the building department, the conservation board, there were two driveway entrances. We've redesigned the site plan for this property and proposing to eliminate the existing curb cut in the southerly portion of the property. That's so we can comply with the carriage house law, because now we're asking for carriage house relief. We have to, we have to make some changes to try to minimize the amount of relief that we need. The, the nice thing about that, we'll talk about that later, is that in eliminating that driveway, and this is something that I'm really gonna have to ask Steve to look and see if he can come up with, because it's very, very important. We're significantly reducing the, the retaining wall on the east side of the property in a lot of instances, even much, 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 much lower than was permitted under the plan. So we looked at the retaining wall, the retaining wall had a certain height. We'll talk about that later, but we're reducing that.
I can pull it up right now for you.
Well, we might as well, I've been talking about it, so we might as well talk about it right now. When we, again, a little bit of kicking scream on the client's point of view, but I said, "Listen, you gotta get back here, we gotta figure this stuff out." And I wanna minimize the number of variances, so we're taking away one of the driveways. And in doing that, we're eliminating the substantial portion of that retaining wall on the west, which candidly, I think some of the board members were uncomfortable with, so. And that's been a retaining wall, been sort of the, the conflict de jour lately, so maybe the last couple of years in terms of retaining walls. We have a retaining wall that was permitted for the septic system. Then we ran it to the south to have some retainage for the, for the parking area. It was supposed to be 12 feet, I guess 12 feet above sea level, is that what it was, or something like that? Steve will tell you.
12.9, yes.
Excuse me?
12.19 feet above sea.
Yeah, and then, and then, but then it went up another two feet as it went to the area of the parking area. I never liked that. I didn't think, to be honest with you, that the board was ever be totally comfortable with that, because not only was there a high retaining wall, but it was two feet higher than it was built. So what we did was a massive redesign. And that retaining wall now is not only fully in line with what the permit was for, but we've dropped it substantially. And Steve, why don't you let us, can you show us the way we've done that? Because it's gonna see, it's, I think it's a massive, massive give back. And again, the reason being is that even though the large majority of this stuff was built with permits, except for the height, which we're gonna get into a little bit, we've already gotten into that. But I, you know, I said to the applicant, "We gotta try as much as possible to try to minimize the amount of, of, of some of the, and the requests for relief here."
Does the board have these plans?
Yeah, 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 those are, those are in, we submitted those, where, Bailey, what were those submitted?
The detail was submitted today.
The detail was submitted today.
But there was a retaining wall detail included in our March 12 submission.
But there was a retaining wall detail submitted in our March 12 submission. The only reason, the only difference is, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, the only difference is that I wanted the board to see a line that showed the permitted, you know, what, what was permitted, so you can see the dramat, dramatic reduction in the height of the retaining wall as it moves south. So it's not terribly different from what you've had since March, but I wanted the board to see that as permitted line that runs across the top. Steve, Steve, can you just highlight what I've been talking about to the board?
Right, yeah, so I just wanna start with the plan first, real quickly. In trying to eliminate this southern curb cut, we saw an opportunity to also reduce this wall that runs along these property lines. So what we did was we redesigned the parking court and created interior circulation so that cars can come down and ramp down to access the garage here, and therefore giving us the ability to close this curb cut off. And so doing, we're able to take where the wall steps up currently, two feet, as approximately in this location, we're able to take that, reduce it to the permitted height of 12.19 for the sanitary system, and then begin to ramp it down in this section. So it actually ramps down from 12.19 to three feet at the southerly point here. So in, in the, in the, the section elevation, if you just bear with me, this line, this red, this red line here is the permitted height of the sanitary wall. And as you, as you proceed south, this would have been the permitted height that, if it was constructed. We, our proposal is to take this and ramp down with that interior ramp that we're showing here. This is the new wall height. And we did some calculations on the average height of this wall, and we took nine sections and taking, you know, takeoffs on the outside and the inside of the wall. We were at about 3.63 feet average height for this wall now.
Okay, so thi, this was the, this wall was the one area that I was very candidly, because I'm always candid with you guys, very candidly, was very concerned about, because, you know, I, I feel very strongly that there's no impact on, on the neighbors, the other neighbors to the north and to the, and to the west, but I was a little bit concerned about the impact on the neighbor, neighbor to the east. And I was also concerned about the fact that retaining walls have become a substantial issue in here. Even though we buffered the heck out of it, and it's gonna disappear, as you can see, I wanted to make sure that that was, that, you know, there was just no retaining, retaining wall there. You know, if, you know, during the winter, there wasn't, the buffers weren't as, 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 as helpful. And just to make sure that we greatly softened it. It is coming great expense and redesigned, because this house was built to have two driveways. And you drive in, right now, you drive in to the garage directly from the street on the south. So this is, this is not a little, little undertaking, you know? And we did more than, at first, we were just gonna cut two feet off of the, of the wall, which would have been totally in conformance with the building permit. But when we started looking at this stuff and tried to minimize the number of variances and tried to, to fit ourselves within the carriage law, we said, "Okay, we're gonna lose that driveway." And it's, again, it's something that we're not happy about, but, you know, I think it's a massive give back, and it's not something that comes cheaply. It's even on top of the damages that I've told you about before, the $4.5 million. So this is, took an enormous amount of redesign, but we're gonna do it, because we think it ends up as the, even the more salutary lowering this, of this, this line. So that, I think that's all, all good. You know, going back to the carriage, the carriage house, no height relief, as Katie pointed out. This is confirmed by the building department. I don't know where the objectants got the thought that this carriage house was higher than allowed. It's, you know, it's subject to its own set of rules, its own set of setbacks, its own set of limitations, and we don't need any height relief. It's no closer to the northerly property line than the previously existing structures were. So again, I don't see where there's any harm or any foul. And while we do need this variance relief, it doesn't change the fact that the applicant obtained permits to construct this carriage house. And he relied on those permits. And we're here, we've got a bit of a mess on, on our hands, but don't forget, a lot of this stuff was approved, whether rightly or wrongly, and it was approved. And there's been some suggestion that it was in bad faith, I don't see any bad faith. There's some suggestion that it was bad faith. Oh, here's the suggestion that I thought was interesting. There was some bad faith, because the prior grant of the variance allegedly said you couldn't come back and get any more relief. Well, it doesn't say that, number one. Number one. Number two, it didn't do what the board would have required in the, now, which was required a covenant, but there's no covenant there. This variance is sitting on the town record somewhere. Query whether or not there was an obligation to, to do that sort of in-depth research. But in any event, it was sitting there. But then something, the, the, the objectant says something, it's just made out of whole cloth. Says, "Oh, that's a condition to the property." It wasn't a condition to the property. You know, I, I litigated this, I'm getting really long in the tooth. I litigated this very issue in 31 years ago in the village. Case versus Sandy International versus Corman. And the Supreme Court of the, of the County of Suffolk said, "You can't put a condition or anything in a variance, even if that," and, and again, there is no condition. It's just the objectants are straining really hard to make it a condition. You can't put a condition in a variance that removes a zoning board's ability to go back and reconsider the property at any, at any time. This is, I'm reading right from the case, Sandy versus International versus Corman, a case I was counsel on. It's a Supreme Court case, Suffolk County. We'll, we'll, we'll give it to you, we'll give it to our adversaries, index number 8914437. A condition imposed on a grant of a variance, which was in excess of the board's authority to, would, would be to impose, because you're taking away the jurisdiction of the court to look, of the board to look at again, is improper. So there's nothing in that variance that says you can't, we can't do what we're doing right now, which is to come back to, which is what we're doing. So that's, that's not any sort of bad faith. That was, as a matter of fact, you know, you, you had discussion and colloquy about that with John Wagner was in, he's coming back and asking the board to look at something again. There's no condition saying you can't come back. Anyway, the existing carriage houses we talked about, there's no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. We had Mike Lynch, a real estate appraiser, and I'm trying to go fast with a lot, lot to cover, so I'm trying not to be repetitious, and if I am, I, I apologize. So, you know, the existing carriage house replaced several previously existing structures. We're making it comply to FEMA, that's supposed to be good. It's located farther from the wetlands. It's only seven and a half feet higher than the existing structures and 1.5 feet higher than if we lifted it as a right. That's all good stuff, we're supposed to be rewarded for that. We did buffers along the property as required by the wetlands permit. And so again, that's all the sort of things that suggest that the board should smile on this application, and we, and we respectfully request that you, that you do. This is a house, this carriage house, some of the stuff that went on with the principal house, and, and we don't think there's any harm or foul, because ultimately, to the viewshed and to the, to the objectants, it really doesn't have any, any impact on them. But some of the stuff that went on with the, with the, with the construction of the main house was outside of the building permit primarily, it's two and a half feet, it's two and a half feet? Two and a half feet, Bailey? Two and a half feet higher than it should be. But we're gonna talk to you about that. But, God bless you. This, this, this carriage house was built totally in conformance with the building permit. I know Rick Stark has some problems with that, but the building department doesn't. And, you know, where I come from, the building inspector is the one who makes those decisions, not an objectance architect. So let me, let me try to move along. I think we spoke quite a bit about the carriage house, which is built, again, for $2.1 million of the building permit, and everyone sat there and watched it get built and sort of bitched and moaned to the building department, but never did anything about it. So let's talk for a while with the, with the principal residence. Again, in a flood zone. And the applicant seeks relief from the town's restriction to permit the maintenance of the existing residence at 44.6 feet, where 42 feet, as we all know, is permitted. We also need relief on the main house for 38.1 feet, where 40 is required. It's that, one of these variances that is, you know, it's sort of a pain in the neck for me to have to deal with, but nevertheless, there's a triangle piece of the house that's about 100 square feet that is 38.1 feet, as opposed to 40 feet from the front yard. And we'd like you to grant us some relief for that. So the, the house was constructed two and a half feet too high. Also, on the westerly side, it was an area that was supposed to be left open. You know, it was a roofed porch area that was enclosed. Again, a lot of, a lot of tough conversations with the applicant, but that's all gonna go back to the way it should, because I said, "We're not gonna go and ask relief for that, because then we would need relief for an excess of 15,000 square feet to keep that, you know, conditioned space." I don't see the board granting that. So we're gonna go back and retrofit that area to the west so that it is the way it was supposed to be under the building permit, which is roof porches. Again, I, I don't know, I, you know, I keep on seeing these rather imaginative calculations as to what the square footage of the house is. The building department has agreed with the project architect that the house is less than 15,000 square feet. Now, this, this, in my mind, there's no question, and again, where I come from, it's the building inspector, not the objectance architect that makes the rules. The building inspector, not the objections architects that calculates things like lock coverage, which the, which the objectance architect doesn't agree with either, primarily because they've grafted on things that lock coverage of the building department doesn't, okay? But again, the building inspectors agree that this house is less than 15,000 square feet, so no relief is requested. And, and, and again, we're, we're, there's, some of the, some of the enclosures put us over that amount. We're going back, so no relief is required there. I've submitted in my correspondence discussion about the compatibility of the existing residence with the character of the surrounding properties. It's an aerial, I don't know if we can bring that up. No, we're, I'm sorry, we, we, it's too bad, we practiced all this from a technological point of view, but then we somehow, our, my wifi went down, it appears, I, I think that's the source. But in any event, in this neighborhood, in the aerial, the objectance house across the 900 feet away is about 12,000 square feet. Do we have a house at 21 Crescent, right up the road, 15,318? House, Rose Hill Road, across the two palsy lots, each of which could support a 15,000 square feet. Three lots over, that house is 14,000 square feet. Another one at Rose Hill Road, 21,000 square feet. 100 Crescent Avenue, 16,306 square feet. Obviously, some of these houses were built before the current limitation on 15,000 square feet. So I think, you know, it's fair to say, as, as Mr. Fife said in one of the early meetings, no one can really care- no one can really care about a 15,000 square foot house in this neighborhood. And he was just being candid, because it's a house, it's an area of very large homes. And again, you know, so I, I don't think there's any impact whatsoever to the character of the neighborhood. And as it relates to the Halsey parcel across the street, candidly, that was the only one that I thought had some, we had some sort of impact to in terms, and only, not, certainly not in terms of the size, because those two lots could be developed to have houses of the same size, but as it relates to that retaining wall, which we, which we've dealt with. We submitted a view shed analysis prepared by Ares Design, showing there's virtually no naked eye demonstrable difference between the existing height of the house at 44.6 and 42 feet, particularly, certainly of the objectants to the, to the west. We flew a drone, we made sure it was legal, flew a drone over the property, got back down underneath the three layers of mature trees that are in between the objectant at Mohawk's house and this property. We also flew it around all the surrounding properties, and it's essentially impossible to discern from the naked, from a naked eye view, the difference in terms of what you'd see at 44.6 and 42 feet. You know, I, I challenge anybody to walk down the street and say, that house is 30 feet high, that house is 37 feet high from these other properties. It's just, it's just, it's just not really a cognizable harm. We also included several prior grants of this, of this board, where there had been, this board had granted relief, seven, I think, just from my office, so there must be other ones out there, granted relief where no, where people were in the A-zone. We're in a high velocity zone, we're in a V-zone. And I, it was a little bit risky that I said that, because I didn't want to sound cavalier, and I didn't want to sound presumptuous, but at the first meeting, I, I actually disclosed something that I had said, you know, it's a client privilege, I disclosed something that I said to my client. I said, gee, you know something? If we had asked for two and a half feet of relief, and they were being consistent with what they've done in the past in these V-zones, they would have granted it to you. And I, again, I hope you don't punish me for being presumptuous or cavalier or anything like that. I know we always got to come in and prove our record, but this is a house in a V-zone, where the board has granted even more relief in A-zones. That JTB Capital, which is one of the first cases that I handled, was interesting. I think Barbara Labrador is still on the board, and we were talking about how, you know, these FEMA regulations just didn't catch up with the height regulation. She said, we're going to see a lot of these, and indeed you have. The board gave us, you know, we had, I think we had a, I have the numbers here somewhere, but we put it, we had a vertical building envelope of 30.2 feet, that's what the board gave us, in an A-zone. And here we have an envelope of 27.23 feet with a pitched roof. You just can't, you can't get there reasonably. We also explained why it happened this way, there was a lack of communication. Mr. Zarro, the project owner, came in the first night and explained how this happened, was very, very apologetic about it. But again, no impact to the neighbors, other than wagging their fingers at us, no true cognizable impact. And we, we explained how that, how that all happened. And even if it hadn't been a mistake and had, and the way it unfortunately happened, we think that the request is clearly within the ambit of what the board has granted in the past. On top of this, you've got $2.5 million of damage if we're forced to reconfigure this thing for, for, for really, for really no reason, because there's no cognizable harm. And again, I'll take you back to those case law where we talked about the view shed. So that, that, that's, and no requirement, and no, no, no right to have any, any sort of view shed. We also included an affidavit from Mr. Lynch, who's our appraiser. He talked in particular about two, two projects, both of which I was involved in, one at 72 Gin Lane and 28, the other one at 28 Gin Lane. These were waterfront properties. They really had no lateral, peripheral view of the water, but it didn't affect the fact that they, they looked directly out to the water, but they had no peripheral view, didn't, it didn't affect the fact that they went for, for record prices. So despite the partial obstruction of the water view, they were two of the highest documented sales within the town of Southampton. Again, there's no provision of the town code that guarantees property owner, unobstructed water views in every direction, and to the effect that the objectants are relying on that, I suggest they really read the scalphonic case. I think they'll be disappointed. So again, we don't, we don't see any problem whatsoever on here. It's the net positive environmental result compared with the prior improvements, although they're larger in square footage. We now have everything in FEMA compliance, we have a new IA system, we have buffers where there weren't there, we have a significantly reduced nitrogen output from the property. So we're, we, we hope you'll agree that that will be, will be something that'll be good. And again, we, we only exceed the height limitation by 2.6 feet in a V-zone, the board has granted plenty of that relief, and we only need 1.9 feet of relief, only for about, but it's about 100 square feet. So again, we hope you don't think this is, this is pushing the envelope at all, we don't think so. The applicant got a permit to, to build on the site and receive both a wetlands permit and a building permit for 14.7% of coverage. And by the way, this sounds like a lot of information, but it's been since February. Most of this stuff is in the, is in the, is in the, is in the record now, so when, you know, I don't want the objectant saying, oh, Mr. Bennett's creating a lot of new record and all this stuff, you know, most of this stuff is in the record now, and, and this case has been sitting for everyone's consideration, you know, since the beginning, since the end of last year. So in any event, let me, let me, let me bring that up again. There was 14.7% of coverage, or was it 14.7 or 14.9% of coverage on the permit? 14.7% of coverage was permitted on the building permit. We need relief to 14.4, we didn't build what was on the building permit. We submitted discussions on how we believe it was arrived at by the building inspector, that we were allowed 14%, 15% coverage. There was a legend on one of the, some of the prior plans, it said R40, that was an old, that was an old, that was an old zoning code, section, zone, it was an old zone, but in R40, 15% is a lot, is relied. And I would note that the properties to the east along Rose Hill Road are located within the R60 zoning residence, where 15% of lot coverage is permitted. So again, oh, and by the way, Mr. Stock, I, I think is confused with the fact that in the village of Southampton, lot coverage is wall structures, it's not like that some of the other villages around here, it's roof structures, I should say, it's not like some of the other villages around here, where everything that you cover a property with is considered in, in lot coverage. The only time you have things other than roof structures, you know, roofed, roof structures that are climate controlled, the only time that you consider things other than that in the town of Southampton is for rear yacht lot coverage, but that's not an issue here, because tries as much as they want, that lot to the north is a side yard. And that's what the building department said, that's the way, we've read it, and we, we feel confident that you'll agree with us, with you, because this has been something that the applicants have been hammering on, and the building inspector continues to call that a side yard, thus the way the building inspector advertised the matter for relief. So again, we relied on a good faith building permit. We're spending a lot of money here in terms of trying to make, minimize the variances. We have two units of density, but we're buying a significant expense, a full credit within the Southampton School District, to try to get us closer to that, the, all the requirements of the carriage house law. A little bit shy in the tennis court, 28.5 feet as opposed to 30, but the accessory structures on that property were all a lot closer in the past. So we're hoping that the 1.5 feet will not make a big difference. It's, the court is sunken, it's reduced in size, it's surrounded by retaining walls that will be planted by Boston Ivy for screening. It's not visible. Yes?
For the tennis court, I'm just, I'm confused now, because you had said that the building, that, the relief for the tennis court is for a rear yard, right? So is that portion of the rear?
No, it's a side yard.
Side yard.
Side yard. That north yard is a side yard.
And we wanted a front accessory rear yard setback.
We have a side yard.
We have a side yard.
Okay, so it needs a 30-foot side yard setback?
Yep.
Yep.
Talk to Dennis.
Did you say, did you say you shrunk it in size?
It is, it's 115.
No, it's, it's 115 by 60. It's not a, it's not a standard court, which is 120 by 60. Let's see, I think we went through, I'm following my script, but I think we went through all the stuff. I wish, I'm a little bit disappointed that I wasn't able to show you some of the, the visuals, but you have them all in your file, and I'm confident that you all know this site very well. So that's essentially where we are. Just in summing up, I just wanted to remind you, in case, unless of course you have any, any questions, the height variance required is even less extensive than granted to other applicants and results. Oh, that's what I wanted to mention, how foolish of me to forget. And you've assessed on probably four or five applications that my office alone has, has, has handled. If, if you took the house that was there before this new house was constructed pursuant to the building permit and raised it to a conforming FEMA elevation, it would be higher than the existing house, so that even though we need relief for the existing house, the, if we raised it, the older house, it would be higher than the existing house. I think, Bailey, help me with the, what the actual footage is on that, what?
It was at 3.7.
It would have been 3.7 feet higher as opposed to 2.5 feet higher. And you've used that on numerous occasions wisely and fairly, when somebody came in and said, I need some height relief here, and, but you know, if I took the existing house and raised it to the required FEMA elevation, which I can do as a matter of right under the Southampton Town Code, it would be higher. And so, that seems fair. So what do we have here in summing up? The transfer of full development right within the Southampton School District, even though I think everyone's, you know, understands that there are two development rights here. We took away the second driveway, modified the parking court to reduce the height of the retaining walls, reduced the gross floor area of the existing residence, you know, I mean, which, you know, listen, I don't want to, I don't need a, I'm not, I'm not suggesting I got to get a brass ban for that. They enclosed, you know, about 1,200 feet of, of area that, that they shouldn't have, so that's, but that's getting taken away. We're not asking for any relief for that as built part. We're going to take that away and make the, the porch, you know, just roofed the way it was supposed to be. And so again, you know, if there are any questions, we're here to answer them. Obviously, you're going to hear from the applicant. I have no objection to having further written testimony on this. I don't even, I'm not even going to ask you for the last word on it, I'm going to ask you to establish a date when everybody has to get stuff in by, but I think this is, anything else is really flogging a dead horse. Everybody knows what went on here, everybody knows what the damages are, everybody knows what everybody's claims are. There's nothing really new in the record, with exception of some case law, which I think is devastating to claim based upon loss of, of view. And I'll, unless you have any questions, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, does anyone have any questions with John?
No.
Okay. If not, who would like to speak next?
I would, if you can hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, board members, Ms. Garvin. David Dubin, Amy Latham, Shay Kelly, moving, Corderaro, 230 North Sea Road, Southampton. We represent the Halsey family, who owns two properties across Crescent Avenue from Applicants Project, and the owner of 175 Mohawk Avenue, which is directly across Mud Creek. To grant applicant, present the application, this board will have to approve of 17 variances. They've all been identified in the papers we've been, we've submitted. This number alone is substantial, and is a red flag highlighting the fact that this development is wholly out of character with the neighborhood. Board would also have to overrule this board's 1976 decision. And I ask you to look at that decision, because the way Mr. Bennett described it is totally inaccurate. This decision permitted a one-car garage and shed to be converted to a maid's quarters, consisting of one bedroom, one bathroom, and a total of 495 square feet, with the express restriction that it could not be enlarged. That's this board's decision. This board would also have to violate the 50% rule by permitting a one-story, one-bedroom, one-bathrooms maid's quarters of 495 square feet to become what was built, which is a two-and-a-half-story, 2,100-square-foot, what he's now calling a carriage house, and we'll get back to that, consisting of three bedrooms, three-and-a-half bathrooms, and a jacuzzi. This applicant, this application would also require the board to, for the carriage house alone, including permitting the carriage house on a 2.2-acre, 900 lot in an ORC, in a CR-120 zone, where the property must be three acres. Now, I haven't seen Mr. Bennett cite any case that says that this board's ever done it before, and to our knowledge, it never has. So let's look, rather than looking at village codes, rather than looking at decisions in Northport, let's look at what the carriage house rules say. And I quote, "The minimum lot area required for the addition of a carriage house shall be three acres in the CR-120 zone," end quote. Wants to be, look at it themselves, that's at 330-9-4-A. That's the carriage house rule. This board would also have to accept a TDR for a substantially undersized, substandard lot by nearly one-third, where there are at least eight other variances that are required in order to permit the carriage house, which again, to our knowledge, this board has never allowed before. And this board would also have to disregard the filed complaints of nine neighbors, basically the entire neighborhood, who have filed formal objections to this project in this proceeding. Let's see if we can pull that up, so there's no confusion about who's objecting and who Okay, so the, this is a tax map of the area. Of course, the yellow is the subject lot, Mr. Zarro's lot. All those pink properties, which represent nine neighbors, are all submitted, filed objections to this application. And the orange properties were filed, were letters that originally were filed in support, where the neighbors found out that Mr. Zarro had been telling them all they needed, all he needed was a small height variance, and so they withdrew their support. That's, that's the neighborhood that we have to balance our interests with. Okay, let's apply the standards of granting variances under Town Code Section 330-166. And curiously enough, I haven't heard Mr. Bennett address the five criteria, I've heard him address mostly everything else, but not that. Criteria one, the applicant's development unmistakably The applicant's development unmistakably poses an undesirable change in the neighbor's, neighborhood's character in a detriment to his neighbors. Now, whether you use applicants' 14.7% lot coverage or architect's thoughts 16.8 coverage, the variance required is either 44% or 68%, which is certainly out of character with the nearby properties and which we show in our papers is over twice the lot coverage of neighboring properties. That's applicant's gross floor area of what truly is 20,000 square feet is clearly out of character with the neighborhood. Now here again, whether you use applicant's own figures or architect's stocks figures, the GFA is between 45% to 115% greater and his property size is 55% smaller than his neighbors. This abusive overdevelopment of applicant's 2.2-acre lot is also reflected in the fact that nine of his neighbors have filed formal objections. Let's go to criteria number two. Without question, applicant could have redeveloped his property without requiring 17 variances. After completing demolishing all existing structures on the property, including a historic home that his neighbors tried to preserve, applicant had a blank slate and a conforming building envelope in which to build a very large house with accessory structures without the need for any, any variances. Now this, let's talk about the massive concrete retaining wall in his front yard, which he has agreed to reduce from eight feet to six feet. Well, we've shown that what that amounts to is less than 30% of removing the concrete wall. Why did he put such a big concrete wall in? Well, he admitted it was for the convenience of parking his cars. Yet he could have used stairs or a sloped walkway to avoid seeking what is now a 50% variance. And one of the more disturbing photos of this project that we submitted shows the massive concrete wall towering over Mrs. Halsey, standing beside it on Crescent Avenue. Criteria three. The requested variances are clearly substantial. The 17 total variances required and the eight variances required for the carriage house alone show how substantial the required variances are. Many of these variances are substantial in and of themselves. For example, as we have shown, the lot coverage variance itself is between 44% to 68% and the retaining wall height variance is 50%. As we have shown in our papers, the courts have routinely denied variances for less percentages and for far fewer total variances. Criteria four. These 17 variances, if granted, will no doubt have an adverse impact upon the neighborhood's physical and environmental conditions. The Conservation Board, back on December 4th, 2019, recognized the potential adverse environmental impact when it notified this board that the dwellings had been enlarged, the guest house had been expanded, and therefore, according to the Conservation Board, they are, quote, "not consistent with the plan approved by the modified wetland permit," end quote. That's your Conservation Board. With our latest submission, we have included a report from Robert Grover, the Director of Environmental and Coastal Sciences, Green and Peterson, in which Mr. Grover details the adverse environmental and physical impacts, including to the water ecology, the water quality, the local ecology, the flooding onto Crescent Avenue and the neighbors' properties from the concrete wall, and probably most importantly, the likelihood that the 16 cesspools, I repeat, 16 cesspools on this property will fail due to their proximity to the groundwater. That's Mr. Grover, our environmental scientist. The adverse impact to the physical conditions is also established by the fact that the nine neighbors who surround the property have filed formal objections. And lastly, the environmental problems identified by Mr. Stott, God bless you, who is a lead certified architect, include that the enlarged carriage house is now merely 10 feet from the wetlands, the failure to comply with the town's hers rating, and the substantial added fill for the enlarged retaining wall all point to the adverse impacts on the environmental conditions. Criteria five. The alleged difficulty was entirely self-created. Each of the 17 variances required by applicant was self-created. This points to applicant's bad faith and underscores that any economic hardship also was self-created. For example, the enormous expansion of the main and guest houses, which now far exceeds GFA of 15,000 square feet, easily could have been avoided by designing smaller houses consistent with the Town Code and this board's decision and rules. The initial application submitted to the Building Department, and we've heard a lot from Mr. Bennett about how the Building Department approved this and how the ARB approved that and how the Conservation Department approved that. Well, that's just simply not the case. The initial application submitted to the Building Department started with a lot coverage of 27% increase over the code, which has now expanded to 47% over the code. This too easily could have been avoided. And the height variance applicant is seeking for his main dwelling could have been avoided if he simply followed his architect's advice and either reduced the height or applied for a variance. Yet applicant didn't follow his architect's advice and he ignored it and he just kept building. Now, after you apply these statutory criteria to the 17 variances required, this application does not come close to being granted. Excuse me. The abusive nature of this application is underscored by the demolition of the 495-square-foot, one-bedroom, one-bathroom maid's quarters that now applicant is calling a two-and-a-half-story, three-bedroom, three-bathroom, 2,100-square-foot carriage house. This board's 1976 decision, which expressly restricted the maid, restricted the maid's quarters to 495 square feet, is an insurmountable problem for applicant. That decision allowed a garage and shed to be converted to a, quote, "maid's quarters," end quote, for which, and I quote from the decision, "the nonconformity shall not be increased," end quote. The authorities cited in our papers that we have submitted to this board hold unequivocally that this board is bound by this precedent and applicant is charged with knowledge of this restriction. Applicant's purported solution that he will buy TDRs from third parties does not enable him to sidestep this precedent. Not only did applicant fail to follow this board's decision, he did not follow and adhere to the building permit issued by the Building Department, which was for a, quote, "two-story, two-bedroom cottage," end quote, or the wetlands permit issued by the Conservation Board, which was for a, quote, "secondary, one-story guest house with a footprint of 559 square feet located 22.4 feet from the wetlands," end quote. What these permits authorized is a far cry from what applicant built, which again, is a two-and-a-half-story, three-bedroom, three-and-a-half bathroom, 2,100-square-foot residence nearly 10 feet from the wetlands. Now, Mr. Bennett keeps quoting how much money it's gonna cost to, uh, to do what the applicant should have done in the first instance. That's no excuse, not under the law and not under these facts, to allow him to sidestep these laws and these rules. What applicant is attempting to call a carriage house at this time did not appear as a carriage house on any of the plans he submitted to the Building Department, any of the plans he submitted to the Conservation Board, or the plans submitted to the ARB, nor did he attempt to call this residence a carriage house in his initial application to this board or in the as-built survey he submitted to this board. It was only after we demonstrated that the guest cottage expansion violated this board's 1976 precedent and the 50% rule, that applicant modified his application and started calling it the carriage house. Well, whether he calls it a carriage house or anything else, whether he buys TDRs or not, this board is compelled to apply its 1976 precedent and it must adhere to the 50% rule and it must not grant carriage house relief where this application requests eight variances from the carriage house rules, including perhaps most importantly, the fact that applicant has a substantially substandard, undersized lot. Now applicant offers some excuses for the variances he requires, but they do not cut it under the facts of the law. First applicant blames the Building Department and his architect for thinking his property was in an R40 zone allowing for a 15% plot coverage. Well, under the law, this board is not obligated to perpetuate this error. And I encourage you to see the cases cited at page nine of our March 11, 2020 letter brief. Under the facts, the Building Department, the building permit clearly states that this property lies within the CR 120 zone. An applicant's own architect, his own architect's plan submitted with his building permit application themselves identify the property as a CR 120 property. Next applicant claims, well, it's the builder's error that should absolve him. No way does applicant show how the builder made 17 errors, one for each of the variance applicant requires. And the cases hold applicants who build due to contractors' errors are not entitled to variances. In fact, the case law is that applicants are bound by their builders and architects' errors. And I encourage you to see the cases we cited at page 11 of our June 2nd, 2020 letter. Next applicant's fallback excuse is that he relied in good faith on the permits issued by the Building Department and Conservation Board. Well, again, that's just simply not true. Not only did applicant disregard these permits, he doesn't even come close. As explained, the Conservation Board's wetland permit specified a one-story guest house with a footprint of 559 square feet, 22.4 feet from the wetlands. In the most recent survey applicant submitted to the Conservation Board, what does it show? It shows 14 bedrooms for the main residence, which is a far cry from the nine bedrooms in the permit issued by the Building Department. So I encourage you, you compare the building permit and the Conservation Board permit with the as-built, or what was, what we know so far is as-built survey, and you'll see the vast variance in what actually was built. Under these facts, it is not surprising that the Conservation Board has withdrawn its permit and has recommended in writing to this board that the ZBA postpone any decision on this application until a new permit application has been submitted and reviewed, that the Building Department directed applicant to stop work, and that the ARB has withdrawn its approval. Now why apply for permits at all if you intend to totally ignore them? Applicant's next excuse is the Building Department and the Conservation Department performed numerous and continuous inspections of the construction. I think you heard Mr. Bennett say tonight, all the guest cottages awaiting is a CO. Well, that's simply not true at all. According to the Building Department's own records, which we've submitted to this board in our recent submission, the Building Department has performed a total of two inspections of the main dwelling, which exceeds 15,000 square feet, and a total of three inspections of the carriage house, which applicant says is completed. These clearly do not include the mandatory inspections set forth on applicant's building permit. With respect to the Conservation Department's oversight, this is really telling. The Conservation Department, for the past six months, has sought permission to re-inspect the property, has requested an updated as-built survey, and has requested that applicant file an amended wetlands permit application for the last six months. And neither applicant nor his consultants have fulfilled any of the Conservation Department's requests. And you'll see the, you'll see the correspondence, which we foiled from the Conservation Department, between the Conservation Department and applicant and applicant's consultants. Lastly, applicant came to this board claiming that he had the support of his neighbors. Well, we learned that any initial support he received was based on applicant's deceiving his neighbors by claiming that all he needed was a small height variance for the main house. In fact, if you look at the tax map before you, you see that applicant is now facing nine neighbors who have filed formal opposition letters and two neighbors who withdrew their initial misguided support. Now let me reiterate what we said at the first hearing. Our clients are not opposed to Mr. Zarrow developing his property consistent with the Town Code, consistent with this board's precedents and the established rules this board has followed for many years. However, they strenuously object to the 17 variances and their impact upon their properties, their neighborhood, and their town. Well, we have good news here, and I don't want you to miss this good news. The good news is that applicant claims that he has spent over $1,000 per square foot on his guest house. Well, to our knowledge and our thinking, that means he's well-equipped to modify it so that it's consistent with the Town Code, consistent with this board's precedent, and consistent with the established rules that this board has followed. Now how did this train go so far off its tracks? Well, perhaps it's because applicant ignored this board's precedent. He disregarded the 50% rule. He has not listened to his neighbors and he has attempted to set a horrible precedent by buying third-party TDRs for a seriously undersized lot in order to try to cram in, what's he trying to cram into this 2.2-acre lot? A 16,718-square-foot, 14-bedroom main residence, a 2,100-square-foot second residence, six swimming pools, and that's not a typo, six swimming pools, a tennis court, a jacuzzi, and other structures, all on a 2.2-acre lot that is required to be three acres in this zone adjacent to wetlands and the bay. Lastly, applicant claims he has made significant changes to his project and variance request. Well, let's look at the changes that he's made most recently. As shown by Architect Stott, all he has done is eliminate one curb cut, made some cosmetic changes to a glass wall of a porch, and he lowered the front yard concrete retaining wall from eight feet to six feet. That's it. He still requires 17 variances, and you'll read them in our papers and we've identified each and every one of them, including a 50% variance for the commercial-style retaining wall in his front yard along Crescent Avenue that no other neighbor has, that towers over our client's properties, and that has been flooding out Crescent Avenue. The eight-foot bunker was reduced a total of 28% as shown by Architect Stott. Perhaps you can show before and after pictures of what the neighborhood gets to enjoy now that he's put this concrete bunker right up against Crescent Avenue in his front yard. that he's put this concrete bunker right up against Crescent Avenue in his front yard.
Bear with us one second, this is easier as you all know to do in person.
David, while you're trying to get that up there, can you just explain to me a little bit more about what you're saying about the precedent for the prior ZBA decision? Because what they're proposing now, I mean, obviously they need variances, but what they're proposing now, the dwelling and the carriage house, is a permitted use. So why do they need permission from the zoning board to, why are they bound by a prior variance that's talking about the size of the cottage, or the maid's quarters, or whatever it's called?
Good question, Katie. And the answer is this, this property benefited from two residences because the prior owner had a big enough property to go in, and you can look at the zoning board's decision, to be able to say, okay, you know what, our property is big enough to have, to subdivide and have a second building lot, but instead of doing that, we're going to give that up. We're going to give up our right to subdivide. So what we want to do is we want to have a cottage for our maid, a one-story, one-bedroom cottage. And the zoning board, in fact Bob Nardi was the chairperson at that time, said, you know what, okay, that makes sense, this way we're going to reduce the density or reduce the building area because you're going to only have one buildable lot, but we're going to restrict you. We're going to say to you, look, we, you can't, we're going to give you a 495 square foot cottage, but you can't come back. You can't come back years later and say, okay, well, we got that relief, and now we want a variance on top of a variance. That's not permitted. But you look at the cases that we've cited, when a zoning board issues a restriction like that, the subsequent property owners are bound by that restriction. Otherwise, listen to me a second, otherwise, why wouldn't anybody get a zoning board decision tomorrow and says, okay, this is subject, you can't enlarge this property any longer, and then wait some years and come back and say, well, wait a minute, we're trying to come in under a different set of rules? And the irony of all of that is, is the most important feature of the Carriage House rules is density. And you'll look at the papers, we went to the legislative history of why they allowed Carriage House rules, and the purpose of it was to say, you're not going to reduce the density, not going to increase, not going to increase density on this property, you're going to allow for a small second residence.
But the Carriage House law also dictates, you know, how big it can be in relation to the main dwelling. I don't see how the density is changing from a dwelling and a maid's quarters to a dwelling and a carriage house, I guess is my point. If you're allowed, if it's a permitted use, notwithstanding that you need an area variance for the, you know, for the lot size, I don't see how it's, I don't see how it's consistent with the precedent set before the war.
Well, that precedent allowed for something very specific, okay? It allowed for a 500 square foot guest house, okay? This is now over four times, what's been built is over four times that size. So the fact that you're trying to grab onto a Carriage House rule and say, you know what, somehow that avoids the 1976 precedent, it just doesn't work.
Just let me ask one more question, because I know everybody wants to move on. So say, say this lot was larger, and it complied with all of the Carriage House provisions, you know, the house was in conforming locations, is it your position that they couldn't go to the building department as a right and convert, convert whatever that maid's quarters is into a Carriage House?
Absolutely, not on this property, because it had an express restriction. But you know what, Katie, even, the point is this, is you've got a situation where this applicant needs eight additional variances, even by tendering the TDR, okay? The TDR, okay, so I don't think, I don't think, you know, we can, we can agree to disagree on the extent and breadth of the 1976 decision. I believe if, again, you look at the cases we've cited, that this board is restricted by its earlier decision. But I'll tell you what, it's certainly restricted by the eight other variances, including the substandard-sized lot under the, under the Carriage House rules that are unequivocal.
I mean, that's why they're asking for relief.
Well, right, asking for extraordinary relief, not just, not just relief. So here's a picture, here's a picture of what Mrs. Halsey is looking at, when we talked about what the impact and how this has been an environmental improvement and all these other things that we heard. This is before the Zarro development, and now what she's looking at now. That's Mrs. Halsey standing in front of the concrete bunker. I'll go on, because you guys have been here for a long time. Let's look at the horrendous precedent this board would set if it granted applicant 17 variances. Any property owner with a substantially substandard lot could buy a TDR, ignore all of the other provisions of the Carriage House's rules, and defeat the aim of the Carriage House's rules, which is to keep density down by allowing large tracts to stay intact. It would also pave the way for developers to ignore this board's precedents and seek variances on top of variances. It would provide a precedent for applicant to disregard the 50% rule. It would also encourage developers to apply for numerous variances in a single application despite the fact that they are substantial. And it would enable developers to argue that in calculating the GFA, a Carriage House's GFA should be excluded, even though it is contrary to the town code and this board's decision. And I want you to look at the decisions that we cited, and you see if there's any basis in the town quote code to say GFA is measured by one residence when there's two residences on your property. I've seen no authority for that proposition. How do we prevent this train wreck? We submit that this board suspend its review as recommended by the conservation board until the conservation board obtains an as-built survey showing the substantially enlarged main and second residences, until it is allowed to re-inspect the premises, and until it reviews and approves a modified wetlands permit application, all of which is requested on multiple occasions from applicant and his consultants for over six months, but which applicant has refused and failed to produce or permit, and that the full architectural review board have an opportunity to review applicant's newly modified plans to see if they comport with their standards. We also submit at this time that this board should take this opportunity to explain to applicant that it is bound by its 1976 decision, restricting the guest cottage to 495 square feet in one story, that it has no intention of violating the long-established 50% rule to allow a Carriage House on a substandard lot, and that it will not allow applicant to use third-party transfer development rights to defeat the Carriage House rules on a standard-sized lot, which it has not done in the past, because to do so would set a horrendous precedent. Now lastly, you had a discussion with Mr. Bennett about the, what the building department denied with respect to the tennis court. And I think if you look at Mr. O'Rourke's denial on January 16, 2020, he clearly identified the tennis court was for a rear yard, not a side yard, as Mr. Bennett presented to you.
I mean, I think the setback is the same, I just wanted to make sure we were identifying it correctly.
Well, because there's other aspects of the application that come into play as well. You are absolutely right. So I'm not going to take up any more of your time now. You've been here very patient, listening to me and to Mr. Bennett. I'll ask you if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And if you don't, I'll let the neighbors and their council take their turn, because I see that they've been waiting patiently here.
Okay, any questions of David, members of the board? If not, Mr. Kirst?
Thank you. Hi David Kirst, on behalf of Stuart Gross, who's here with me as well, and I know he intends to speak. To start off with a few things regarding the rear yard, Mr. Bennett's letter conveniently leads off the second half of the waterfront lot line rule, where it says the line opposite the front shall be considered the rear lot line. So if he's claiming he has three front yards, then the only alternative for the yard that is opposite the water is a rear yard, not a side yard, which is why we believe the additional relief is necessary for rear yard, and that does impact the rear yard lot coverage as well. Next, I'd like to say that when it regards to the, hello?
We got you.
The repeated claim that, well, we could have just raised those existing structures for FEMA compliance, anything after that is really just smoke and mirrors, because that's not what they did do. And I think even the submission by Mr. Bennett of Aureus Designs' supposed rendering shows that clearly, when it comes to the section of the 495 square foot maid's quarters, there's a significant impact from raising that to the current roof height versus what it could have been raised to if they just raised it for FEMA, as well as the fact that the garage portion of that would not have been needed to be raised for FEMA since the first floor is not habitable. So to raise that building up would be unnecessary. Mr. Bennett also wants to have everybody look at the view in a vacuum, and that's just not the way it operates, even in his own letter. Scolfani case says, well, that wasn't enough when there was no evidence of undesirable effect on the character of the neighborhood, adverse impacts, physical environment of conditions, or otherwise detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. And wants you to believe that you only have a view out of one possible side of your property. Here is a photo that has been previously submitted, so this is already in the record, showing the current view for my client's house. And this one is the prior view. You can see in the prior, the cottage barely, barely clears the hedge. You can see the houses on, on the other side of it, on the other side of Me Cox. So this is not just a question of the view, this is a question of a structure that is significantly larger along the wetland, this is a question of mass, it's a question of not meeting what, as a front yard setback even from Mud Creek, he's admitted it's a front yard, this is an accessory structure in a front yard they're asking for, and I don't believe they've even properly requested relief for that. You can see in that, in that rendering from Aureus, the garage section may be close, but the structure for the cottage is not. And again, not to beat a dead horse here, it's been reiterated by Mr. Dubin, but it's a claim that Mr. Bennett makes repeatedly that they had permits and approvals, and, you know, if you, if you apply to build a shed and build a 2,500 square foot house, you can't say, well, you can't enforce that on me, I had a permit. The survey's approved by conservation, the survey approved, the building department showed separate structures, listed structures of one-story guest house to be relocated, separate arrow, one and a half story garage studio to be reconstructed on wood pilings. None of that matches what was actually built. And that's, that's where the problem lies, and where there should be clear that this, these variances should not be granted in regards to the guest house. The additional renderings as well from Aureus Designs are clearly taken from well further landward of the property than our client's existing house, are obstructed by other trees that don't obstruct the view from the residence, and don't accurately portray the view shed from my client's property. And I think when you look at the pictures that we submitted versus their renderings, you'll see that that's readily apparent, and that the claims that there's no further impact from raising what was there to what was built should fall on deaf ears, as they're just not supported by the photographic evidence that has been submitted. And lastly, in echoing some of the concerns of Mr. Dubin, I don't know, I can't think of a single time where this board has granted an approval for structures that need conservation approval that they don't have yet from conservation. It's clear that conservation feels what is built there does not comply, has asked this board not to move forward on it, and this board, if it does, I think that's another unprecedented step. The granting of any sort of variances while conservation is still weighing in on the environmental impacts, which are pretty significant, you took what was a 500 square foot of actual habitable space and turned it into a, at minimum 1,600 based on the applicant's calculations, and at worst 21 or 2200 square feet based on Mr. Dubin's calculations. And, you know, they claim it's been moved back, it's seven inches further from the wetland than what was previously there. So seven inches further back, but three times, minimum three times of the gross floor area. It's hard to say that that's any real benefit to the environment, it's not a benefit to the character of the neighborhood, it's not a benefit to the surrounding properties. If we submitted previous aerials that show this guest house this close to the wetland would be, would be unprecedented for this neighborhood, unprecedented for Me Cox Bay. And we urge this board, urge this board to deny this request by the applicant. And that is all that I have, I'm sure Mr. Gross would like to speak as well.
Any questions of Mr. David Kirst, from members of the board?
I have a question, David, but just getting back to the con board, did you say that it's further away from the wetlands?
They, they claim that it's been moved back, Mr. Bennett and the applicant claims that it's been moved back from what was previously there. It's seven inches further away according to their most recent survey. So there's, to think that that was some astronomical benefit to the environment of moving this previously 500 square foot residence that was, I believe, 18 and a half feet from the wetland to what's currently 19.1 feet for the current, let's call it carriage house for lack of a better term. It's, there's a reason he didn't, they didn't say how far, how much further it was back, because it's so minimal as to be imperceptible.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure, I mean, I understand that, that maybe the conservation board notices that there's differences, I just wanted to find out if they would be saying, oh, it's closer to the wetlands than what was proposed, that's not what you've seen.
No, there are, you know, significant porches that were not on, you know, the previously existing structure, but when it comes to the minimum setback for the actual structure, they've managed to move it a whole seven inches back, and they want to be rewarded for that with 17 variances on the property, so.
Okay, any other questions? If not, is there anyone else who's waiting? If not, is there anyone else who's waiting to be heard in connection with the River Rock application?
I'd like to just make a comment, a few comments about what was presented tonight.
And Richard, had I previously sworn you in?
Yes, you have.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yep. I'm now at 61 Kyle Road in Hampton Bays. I want to thank you all first for your patience tonight. It's a long one. I want to first, I want to cover five points real quick. Lot coverage, building sizes, a carriage house, our interaction with the building department and the environmental issues on this site. The lot coverage first, there, there, the information that I've been given by the applicants seemed to indicate, including the as-built survey, that the buildings are bigger than were permitted. Period. I import those, that information into my computer and the computer tells me that the sizes are larger than what I see on the permits, period. I, I think there needs to be some kind of coming together on the real sizes of these things, just so that the variances, if they're granted, are granted correctly because there's a really big discrepancy between what I see reported, what I hear reported and, and what I see on my own computer images. With respect to lot coverage, a little bit further, there's an area that surrounds the building outside of the perimeter of the main building that's called on the drawings, a covered terrace. Now, this is a roofed structure. It's a waterproof roof structure. So I'm confused about how that pertains to lot coverage. I've asked specifically the building department for a report on that. I haven't, I haven't heard anything back from them. And this takes back to the ball. There's about 5,000 square feet of covered terrace that's unaccounted for when it comes to lot coverage. If that is accounted for with the lot coverage, it pushes the lot coverage up over 20%. Even without that, even without that, the lot coverage, according to my computer and the information that I put into it from the applicants, were over 16% lot coverage. The building size is the same argument. I, I get information from the surveyor as built surveys. I put that information into my computer and the areas and volumes that come up on my computer are not the same as what I'm seeing on the drawings. With respect to the drawings themselves, the applicant's architect submitted drawings to the building department that have, for the main house, to be specific, the carriage house is different, but for the main house, I have absolutely not one single horizontal dimension noted on them. So when we asked the building department to confirm that the building was built according to the plans, when they finally went out to the site to do it, they came back and said, we couldn't do it. We couldn't do it because we had nothing to compare it to. And there were things in the way for them to measure. They, they had a number of excuses. It was too difficult. But the fact is that the architect's drawings don't have enough information, in fact, don't have the information that's actually required by the building department. There are two other aspects of those requirements that are important here. One is site cross sections and one is building cross sections. If either one or both of those drawings had been submitted, it would have shown a number of things. One is that area of the covered terrace is really a roof structure, which needs to be included into the lot coverage. And, and secondly, that it increases the size of the building itself. Secondly, with respect to the site, it, it probably would have shown or could have shown that the retaining wall along Crescent Avenue was really not necessary. It's just a matter of convenience. And if proper slopes, even at the the main house's septic system were implemented to code, that wall may have been significantly reduced or perhaps even eliminated. With respect to the carriage house height, which John Bennett refers to as view shed from the neighbor to the north a number of times. And I, I want you to look specifically at that, what he submitted today and showed us all. Those two drawings of the carriage house as it may have been allowed by right and as it was built. If we look at the drawing that was shown as it may have been allowed by right, it shows the ridge of that carriage house up at the 42 foot height limit, which may have been allowed or somehow managed, but it's completely illogical because the first floor of that building right now sits at about five and a half feet above sea level. It's a 16 foot high building. The existing cottage was a 16 foot high building. If you raise that to FEMA plus two, you're at 33 feet, not 42 feet. So if you built that prop, that project or that carriage house, or let's call it the, the cottage as it really should be, at 42 feet, the floor of that building would have been two stories high. There's just no logic in that kind of comparison, either visually or realistically. So please take a look at that again. It just doesn't make any sense. It's, it's eye candy and it's wash. It's not even true. Environmentally, which is my fifth point, there is absolutely no way that this project is an environmental improvement over what existed before or certainly what could have been.
As an architect.
There is absolutely no comparison that this, and no way you can possibly claim that this is an environmental improvement over what was there or what could have been done. In terms of stripping the entire site, in terms of, of adding twice the amount of fill that was permitted, there's over 400 truckloads of fill in, on this site already. In terms of the septic system, which really should be an IA system somehow because of the way the permit was initially, the timing of the initial permit, they got away with not using an IA system. This is a big, big deal. It really is. In terms of the amount of electricity used on the site, the amount of water used on the site, the fact that the building permit, our building permit process requires a HERS rating before the permit is even granted. This building never had a HERS permit application. And when it was finally submitted in the spring of 2019, it came back as a HERS 54 when a HERS 35 is required. So how the applicant can claim that this is an environmental improvement is just nonsense. It's nonsense.
Oh, shut up.
Those are, that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
System at the carriage house. He's making stuff up now.
John, you're not on mute.
Sorry. Okay. Hey, was there anyone else? Well, any questions up for Mr. Stop? Okay. If not, who else would like to be heard this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Stuart Gross. I'm the so-called neighbor to the north.
Okay. And Stuart, have I previously sworn you in?
No.
Okay. So I just need to swear it in unless you're in a term.
I am not.
Okay. So if you can just state your address.
Stuart Gross, 114 Crescent Avenue in Watermill.
Okay. And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And tell us your comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I thought it'd be useful for you to hear from me directly about my history with the project so that you would have a better understanding of my objections to the requested variances as I stated in the letter that I submitted earlier. About two years ago in March of 2018, I saw that Mr. Zarrow began demolition on the property. And I called him to ask what his plans were for starting construction so I could anticipate when there would be construction noise. He told me he was planning to start soon. I asked him which builder he was planning to use and he told me that he planned to act as his own general contractor. I knew he was very familiar with what's involved in building a home because he built a large house at the end of Rose Hill Road. And I was surprised that he wasn't working with a convention. And my, my antenna kind of went up. And I was concerned that he might not be using a conventional builder who would carefully look at all of the required variances before proceeding with the project. About a month later in April, Mr. Zarrow filed the initial plans for the project with the building department. And I asked my attorney, Mr. Kirst, to review them. And he told me that the filing appeared to be compliant with the zoning laws and that no variances were required. I assumed during the start of construction that that was the case. And then they built the guest house first. And while it was being constructed, my wife and I were astonished at its height, its mass, its proximity to the, to our property and its proximity to the water. I knew that the FEMA regulations had changed, requiring new construction to be higher than it was in the past. But we were still astounded by the height and mass and the proximity to the water into our property. In August of 2019, when construction of the guest house was substantially complete, Mr. Zarrow called and asked me if I was opposing the project with the town. I said I understood it was fully compliant with zoning regulations and he assured me that it was. He said someone in the neighborhood was filing complaints with the building department. Once again, I called Mr. Kirst and asked him to research the subject and he went to the building department and didn't find anything on file. In November of 2019, I was contacted by Mr. Zarrow who told me that he had inadvertently constructed the main house so that the roof was approximately two feet higher than was allowed by code. He asked if I would write a letter to the town in support of his application. I wanted to be a good neighbor and I agreed to do that. I asked him again if that was the only variance involved in his application and he said yes. He then sent me a draft of a letter which asked that I support his request for a variance. The draft letter simply referenced a variance and did not say anything about building height or any other specific variance. And he included a copy. When he, when he asked for the letter, he sent me his filing to this board, which referenced the excess height, but also that the tennis court was one and a half feet too close to the lot line, but made no mention of the guest house or any of the other variances. I sent these materials to Mr. Kirst and explained the situation to him. I told him that I planned to revise the letter that Zarrow had sent me to reflect the fact that I would only support the request for the increased height of the main building. I modified the letter and I sent it to Mr. Zarrow and I believe he delivered it to this board as part of his submission at the first hearing in December. As you know, Mr. Zarrow made a similar request to many of our other neighbors who blindly copied the letter that he gave them, wanting to be good neighbors as I did. Soon thereafter, I learned from Mr. Fife that his clients had been filing complaints about the project beginning all the way back in May of 2019, covering numerous aspects, but in particular, problems with respect to the guest house. While this came as a complete surprise to me, it highlighted that Mr. Zarrow was highly aware that the construction of the guest house had issues and that he knew this when he told me it didn't. I learned that the request for additional variances related to the guest house when the notice was published in the paper in late January of, of this year, just a few weeks before the February 6th hearing. I was beyond shocked to learn that the guest house had been constructed without receiving all appropriate variances in advance. I felt frankly that I'd been hoodwinked. And I couldn't imagine that someone would build a house without having received all the necessary approvals. Having now learned that the carriage house was not built in conformity with regulations and permits as I had always assumed, I filed my letter and photographs prior to the hearing on February 6th. I called Mr. Zarrow beforehand and told him that I intended to do so. And I asked Mr. Kirst to appear at that hearing on my behalf, which he did. I learned from Mr. Kirst that during the hearing, Mr. Bennett questioned my motivation for opposing the variances associated with the guest house. He asserted that my decision to oppose the variances related to some business relationship of mine with one of Mr. Fife's clients, Mr. Schwartzman. I have to say that I'm astonished and deeply troubled by this suggestion and nothing could be further from the truth. I can assure you that I have always been opposed to the guest house's impact on my property from the moment construction began. I just didn't think there was anything I could do about it. When I found out that it was not built in conformity, I felt it was important to inform you of my opposition. I'm all in favor of people doing what they want to do to improve their property so long as it's within the rules. And as indicated by my earlier letter, I'm not opposed to a request for a minor variance like a foot or two of excess roof height. But I'm not in favor of someone building a house knowing that variances are required and then asking forgiveness later. And I'm not in favor of filing vague and imprecise plans to get building permits and then building something radically different. And I'm not in favor of asking for neighborly support for a single variance while failing to disclose numerous issues that hugely affect my property. I'd like to mention in this context, a piece of regulatory history with conservation that relates to my own property. When we bought our house in 2001, the prior owner had been cited for a number of wetlands violations and it had, and had remained stubbornly non-compliant, which had created enormous animosity with the town and with the DEC that we stepped into. We made it a priority to remedy those violations and become fully compliant. And we spent many years and thousands of hours and ultimately hundreds of thousands of dollars to reestablish trust with the regulatory authorities to come up and that was acceptable to everyone and ultimately to plant what we believe is a model wetlands buffer, which you can see in the, in the photo that I submitted. As I said, my wife and I bought our house in 2001 and we've thoroughly enjoyed being part of the Watermill community for almost 20 years. When we bought our house, we were only, we were one of only two houses on Crescent Avenue, the other being the, the very modest farmhouse at 186 that was rarely used by, by its owner. And we knew that over time, there would be additional development on Crescent as the farm fields were sold off and that the new owners were likely to construct large homes. We've had very large homes built to the north and to the east of our property and we've never had any issues with the construction or with any of our neighbors. We also knew that 186 Crescent would eventually be sold and that a large house would be built on it. And we felt comfortable relying on the single building per lot zoning laws and lot coverage and height restrictions that govern the neighborhood to ensure that it would be contextually appropriate. We do not think it is appropriate for Mr. Zarrow to try to exploit a 1976 variance for a 495 square foot maid's quarters and transform it into a 2,100 square foot, two and a half story, 39 foot high house that significantly blocks our views of the bay and the ocean. The view is a highlight of our property and one of the main reasons we bought it. The guest house, the guest house's proximity to our property causes it to tower over us like a prison guard house and it looms enormous over Mud Creek. We reiterate our opposition to the variances and in particular those requested for the guest house and ask that they be denied.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Gross have a question for you. Would, would screening mitigate the issue at all for you concerning the guest house? I know it's not the greatest solution, but I'm just curious if screening would be a help to you or would that be further from? Because we're, you know, the screening would then tower over your property as well.
It really, it really wouldn't.
It would.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. If not, if there's anyone else who would like to be heard, this would be the time. And just to ask this, we're running really late. And we haven't imposed a time limit tonight on, on this public hearing. Listening to it for well over two and a half hours at this point. So we greatly appreciate if anyone else speaks to be brief.
Hi, I'd like to speak and I promise to be brief.
Okay. Joanna, had I previously sworn you in?
In December.
December, that's fine. Okay.
Okay. So this is actually a letter written to you and the board. Okay. Dear Chairman Grossman and Board Members, my family has owned the property located at 145 Crescent Avenue Watermill and 45 Holsey Lane South Watermill for the past 100 years since the 1920s. These properties are to the east of and are directly across from Andrew Zarrow's property located at 186 Crescent Avenue, Watermill, New York. When I received a copy of Mr. Zarrow's initial application, which requested four variances, including a height variance for the main residence, a lot coverage variance, a variance for the retaining wall that exceeded the code's height limitation, and setback relief for the tennis court, I submitted a letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals dated December 18th, 2019, and appeared at the ZBA hearing on December 19th, 2019. At that time, I explained that Mr. Zarrow's request for four variances should be denied because he ignored the zoning code and overbuilt for the size of his property and that to grant his request for variances would set a terrible precedent. I implored the ZBA to do the right thing. Since then, my family received a copy of a second request from Mr. Zarrow for variances. But this time, his notice stated that he is seeking a total of 12 variances, including six variances, to be allowed to convert what was a one-bedroom, one-bathroom maid's quarters to a three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bathroom carriage house and a substantial increase in lot coverage and gross floor area for an enormous residence and a second, very substantial residence. If this were not enough, I am informed by my counsel that there were an additional five variances required by Mr. Zarrow for a carriage house, for which he has not yet applied. I understand that his present application now seeks 17 variances, including eight variances for what he is now calling a carriage house. There is no doubt in my mind that the impact of the oversized retaining wall and the two oversized residences virtually on top of one another will decrease the value of my family's properties as well as our neighbors' properties and certainly change the entire aesthetic of the area and neighborhood. The retaining wall, which informed was reduced from eight feet to six feet, still forms a barricade that towers over my property. I enclosed photos from my property demonstrating the adverse impacts on my property with my March 4th letter. This is clearly why nearly all of Mr. Zarrow's neighbors have opposed his application or withdrawn their initial letter of support, which was limited to the height variance for the principal residence. At last count, there are nine neighbors who have filed formal objections to Mr. Zarrow's application and two neighbors who have filed letters withdrawing their support. In addition, the very substantial increase in the size of both houses requiring Mr. Zarrow to seek variances for gross floor area and lot coverage in such a prominent location on Mecot's Bay changes the aesthetic and landscape of the area and for those who enjoy the bay for recreational purposes. This can be readily seen by observing structures built too late or constructed without complying with the town code. Furthermore, my family is very concerned about the impacts such as more people, noise, cars, pollution associated with having two very large houses on a lot that is far less than the size of any other lot that has been permitted a carriage house in Southampton. There has been no legitimate justification from Mr. Zarrow for ignoring the town code and its requirements. Finally, if the ZBA grants the requested 17 variances, including eight for the carriage house alone, what will prevent developers in our neighborhood and throughout the town of Southampton from violating the 50% rule and the carriage house rules under the town code by citing this matter as a precedent? I implore you, the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, to do the right thing and to deny Mr. Zarrow's request for 17 variances. So that's my letter to you. And then I just have one very short thing to write, to read. Common sense alone tells you this project is wrong. To encumber this already fragile property, which borders not one, but two bodies of water with a 17% lot coverage, is utterly insane. Ask any environmentalist. Since when are ugly cement walls allowed along the main entrance to a house? Drainage problems are already an issue on Crescent and will only worsen if this project is allowed to continue. This applicant has shown total disregard for Southampton rules and regulations, first on Rose Hill Road and now on Crescent. I can't help but think that this is nothing more than an arrogant sense of entitlement. I respectfully ask that you vote no on all variances. You have the law on your side, the community on your side, and you have the power to make the right decision. This is not a hardship case. Never was, not even close. That's it. Thank you.
Your comments. Okay. Any questions of Joanna? Okay. Not, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in connection with the application in River Rock this evening?
See, no.
Okay. We don't have anybody else. Okay. All right. So I guess the last thing we need to do is the timeframe or I guess it will be final submissions. What I'm thinking is, given all the other applications, keeping the public hearing open until July 3rd. That's what I'm thinking we could do here. That would allow anyone who wants to submit anything, including attorneys and interested parties, that period of time, to submit whatever they'd like to submit. And then Katie, I have this with the timeframe for the decision.
I don't know. Before we do that, I wouldn't mind reducing that written comment period for the attorneys. Just because we're going to get bombarded. I mean, what if we get a million, 200 pages worth of written submissions on July 3rd? I'd rather have at least for the attorneys some time before that because it's going to take a while for the board to review all that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I mean, yes. We have been keeping them all open. And I'm not saying close it for the public. I'm just saying for attorneys, we do know who's represented. And so that would be my only recommendation.
Adam, can I just say that I guess it was at about 4 o'clock this afternoon, we received 20-some-odd pages from Mr. Bennett with exhibits and the like.
Oh, and we got yours at 2 o'clock.
Let me finish, Mark.
No, don't stop. No, be honest, Katie.
Don, we've listened to you for hours.
And we've listened to you boring everybody for hours.
Right, right.
We got your submission at 2 o'clock. It was 22 pages. Stop it.
Adam, can I finish?
Yes, please.
All I'm saying is, is these aren't obviously ideal circumstances for attorneys to be able to work. And so we would be comfortable with the July 3rd suggestion that you made, which would give everybody an opportunity to study what we need to and to respond accordingly. Not the least of which, you've got a conservation board that's telling you not to issue any decisions. Okay? So if you're going to issue a decision, you want to be darn sure we have an opportunity to brief it properly. That's all I have to say.
I need two weeks. It's enough. All of Tumelathim's, every one of their letters is just the same thing, written in the same way. I need two weeks. That's all.
Okay.
And that's all you should have. And you should follow Katie's thing. Let's get this done. And by the way, if you want to know what my anger is about, is Mr. Dubin wants everyone to cry for him because he got my papers at 4:00. I got at 2:00 hours earlier an inch and a half. He didn't mention that, did he? But I'll give you my stuff in two weeks, and he should be required to as well.
Okay. So here's what we're going to do. I'm trying to do a Friday, for Candace's sake. So two weeks from tomorrow is June 19th. So for attorneys, the deadline will be end of business on June 19th, to submit whatever you want to submit. Then for the general public, you'll have anyone else in the public who would like to submit can submit by July 3rd at end of business.
Adam, can I ask you, is this a firm deadline? Because last time the board issued a deadline, we received papers from Mr. Bennett after the deadline. And I just want to be clear that this is a firm deadline.
It's a firm deadline.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And then Katie, what do you want me to do in terms of decision date?
Well, first, I just want to, back to the June 19th, I'd ask that everybody email their submissions to Candace by June 19th and then submit the hard copies as well. Because if we get the hard copies only, then we don't have, they get quarantined. Maybe things will change by then, but I'd rather have an email noting that we got it and then the hard copies.
duly noted.
And then maybe 30, you know, what, 30 days to write the decision? I'm just, I don't have my calendar.
It would be the first meeting in August?
Yeah. Let's shoot for that.
Okay. Let me just take a look where that date is.
I know, I don't have my calendar.
August 6th.
August 6th?
August 6th.
Two months.
All right. So.
Is there any possibility that it could be two weeks before? This building is sitting there, exposed to the main house, exposed to the elements. We actually don't have a technical stop work order on anything. We just agreed not to finish anything above the second floor. We've been very amenable to that. But, you know, I can only ask.
But, you know, listen. We can put it for the second meeting in July. I just can't promise it'll be done.
That's fine. That's fine. That's fine. That's fine with me. All I can do is ask. Thank you.
That's the 17th?
Yes.
16.
16. Let me make sure that's correct.
Don, do we have a, just, do we have a, what's the most recent survey? Or are we waiting on a new survey?
No, we have an as-built survey where Bob Smith calculated all the size of the house and the lot coverage and everything.
No, but will that have like the retaining wall and everything on it?
Has the revised retaining wall significantly shrunk, as does the area's design plan? Due to March 12th.
If he has an actual as-built survey, why is the conservation board still asking for one? I mean, this is just, again, nonsense.
Are we done here?[1701.28]